I have to say.
Calling the May ninth Pedaluma City Schools Board of Education meeting to order at four thirty-five. We're acknowledging A B three sixty-one. We are still in a hybrid fashion. Are there any comments from the public on our closed session items? Do we have anyone?
Attendees.
Okay, all right, so we are going to adjourn to closed session. From closed session reconvening, President Pahn, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
All right, please stand.
Wonderful, thank you. So we are going to go right into special recognitions, reports and presentations. So if we can do the student of the semester for San Antonio High School.
Good evening, I'm Gustav Shins Adam, the counselor for San Antonio High School. And today I'll be presenting our student of the semester. I'll do both my speech in both English and Spanish, that's all right. All right, good evening, parents, students and members of the board. Today I have the privilege to introduce our student of the semester for San Antonio High School, Evelyn Cruz. Evelyn. Evelyn came to San Antonio this year, her senior year of high school, in the hopes of graduating on time. Not only was she graduated on time, she has graduated early, having completed all her requirements in the last grading period at the end of April. Since coming to San Antonio, Evelyn has been a model student. She has received numerous academic awards, been on the honor roll every grading period, and has also accumulated college credit through SRJC for Spanish one as a corner world high school and college student. From her teachers, Ms. Chiquini says Evelyn is one of the best writers I've had at San Antonio. She is able to analyze deeply and express her ideas in an eloquent and articulate way. She is quick to smile and has a great sense of humor. Ms. Burrows says of Evelyn, she demonstrates great respect and patience when explaining concepts or helping her classmates with grammar, vocabulary, research writing, reading and writing, and has a very strong work ethic. Ms. Burrows has encouraged Evelyn to get her teaching credentials, as Ms. Burrows is sure that Evelyn will be a great Spanish teacher. Evelyn has been a positive presence on our campus and helps to highlight our school by demonstrating how students at San Antonio are diligent, hardworking students who maximize their efforts and deserving of opportunities to be positive contributors in our community. Her goals are to attend SRJC, transfer to a four university just to study either English or law, or possibly both. I am pleased to introduce our student of semester for San Antonio High School, Evelyn Cruz. I'll do it one more time, Evelyn, so stay with me, all right. When I notice these students and students in the middle of the junta, hoy tengo el privilegio para presentar nuestro estudiante de semestre para San Antonio High School, Evelyn Cruz. Evelyn vino a San Antonio este año, su último año de la preparatoria, en la esperanza para lograr este tiempo. En vez de lograr ese tiempo, Evelyn se va a lograr temprano. Ella ha completado todos sus requisitos en el trimestre pasado, al final de abril. Desde comenzando a San Antonio, Evelyn ha sido un estudiante modelo. Ella ha recibido varios premios académicos y también ha estado en el cuadro de honor varias veces este año. Y ella también ha acumulado créditos para el colegio de Santa Rosa Junior College sobre la clase de español uno, siendo un estudiante de la preparatoria y del colegio al mismo tiempo. De sus maestros, Ms. Chiquini, Evelyn es una de los mejores escritores que haya tenido. Ella analiza y expresa sus ideas elocuentes, tiene una gran sonrisa y tiene un buen sentido de humor. Mrs. Burrows, dice de Evelyn, ella demuestra consideración y paciencia con sus compañeros de la clase y apoyándoles en su gramática, vocabulario, investigaciones, leyendo y escribiendo, y tiene una fuerte ética de trabajo. Ms. Burrows está motivando a Evelyn a ser una maestra porque piensa que va a ser un buen y excelente maestra de español. Evelyn ha sido una presencia positiva en nuestra escuela. Demuestra los estudiantes o el tipo de estudiantes de San Antonio que son diligentes, trabajan duros y maximizan sus esfuerzos y merecen oportunidades para ser ciudadanos positivos en sus comunidades. La meta de Evelyn es asistir a Santa Rosa JC, después transferirse a una universidad para estudiar inglés o la ley, o quizás los dos. Tengo placer para presentar a nuestro estudiante de semestre para San Antonio High School, Evelyn Cruz.
Can the friends and family of Evelyn please stand up? ¿Puede levantarse la familia de Evelyn?
Evelyn. Evelyn, before you leave the stage, I just want to just add a little bit. I remember Evelyn as her elementary principal. And I remember seeing her at sixth grade promotion and we have a beautiful picture together. In fact, last time I was at San, well, a few times ago when I was at San Antonio, she showed me that picture of us in sixth grade, when you were in sixth grade. And I remember at that moment when you were promoting from sixth grade, thinking what all the amazing things that you're going to do, and it just warms my heart to see you up here in front of everybody, winning this award. And no matter what you do, I want you to keep in touch with us here at Pedaluma City Schools. And if you do decide to go in education, you know who you're going to be talking to, right? Okay, congratulations, Evelyn.
Oh, yes. We are going to move on to site reports and we will stay on track and start with San Antonio. And then can one of you advance your slides, or do you want me to help with that? It's just this button that you push, but I can help if it makes you.
I think we're good.
You've got it? Okay, cool.
Okay, so I'm Gloria Castro. I'm Gloria Castro and I'm a senior in San Antonio High School and I'm going to be graduating early next year.
I'm Crystal Cuevas, I'm a junior at San Antonio High School and I plan on graduating San Antonio next year.
I'm Lorenzo Tapia and I'm a junior in San Antonio High School and I plan on graduating next year.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Cabrera and I'm a senior at San Antonio High School and I'm graduating this June.
So at San Antonio, we believe about field trips and how it can help indicate and explore different careers. The field trips we've been to so far have provided us opportunities to explore different career fields and learn about colleges and like what colleges we might consider attending. Students have a bigger, in these field trips, students have a big opportunity of interacting with each other on a more personal level. So as you can see, it benefits us in like so many ways. Some field trips we've been to have been the SRJC, SSU, Shamrock, and we're going to the zoo next Thursday.
At San Antonio, we have an honorable, and it is something we use to, we use every grading period. We always do awards and we give it to students as something to feel good about or as an achievement. We've also had plays like Shakespeare play and it was a really interactive play that we had, sorry. And. Sorry, the, they came and did the Shakespeare play and just it was really interactive. They had a student come up and also participate with them.
And during our mentor days, every student has an assigned mentor class where we go to, where we do building blocks on credits and we have completed as we, as we completed with activities, sometimes like musical chairs.
So we start off the year recognizing our seniors with a senior T-shirt. And I'm not wearing mine right now, but I have our San Antonio hoodie. So as you could see, we like to honor our graduates with a little celebration at our school and they're wearing their bike gown. And also a thing I like about my school is that we get a recognition every grading period and for all of our hard work and it makes us feel like better about it, so it makes us want to do better in the future. And that's all, thank you for listening. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Good job, y'all, thank you. And next up, we have the big house, can I have Casa up?
Hi, everyone. That would be great, yes. Hi, everyone, my name is Emily Rosales and I'm Casa Grande's ASB president and this is our site report for the month of May. So first, we're going to start off with Casa Athletics. First up, we have our girls varsity soccer and recently they made it to the NorCal playoffs. And after winning eleven games in a row, they took the Vival championship title as well as the North Coast section title and made it through the first round of NorCal playoffs. And this is the farthest any athletic team has made it at Casa Grande, so they are definitely making history. And right up next, we have the boys varsity baseball. They hosted their senior night honoring their eight seniors recently. And they had a field beautification and they just wanted to promote and care for their field. And recently they came in first for Vival, so yay, our baseball team. And up next, we have our girls varsity softball. They finally got a permanent fence around their field and made improvements for the field as well. And they also came in first for Vival and had the playoff game today against American Canyon, so we wish them the best. Yeah. And next, we have varsity cheer, who in February competed at the USA Nationals in Anaheim. And after two days of competing against, I believe, fifteen teams, they came out in fourth in a new and advanced division. And not long after, tryouts were held shortly after and they have the results for their new team. And up next, we have campus life. Back in March, we had a walk-in support and students from ASB, along with other student leaders on campus, organized a walk-in support along with many other schools around the area to raise awareness on school safety and to honor Jade and Pientas, who passed away from Montgomery High School. And we had teachers, alumni, students, staff members and more speak in front of over six hundred students who came out to show support. And it was very thoughtful and we felt together as a community, which is all what we wanted at the end of it. And we also had our Step Mobile contest, which basically us in ASB, combined with High School Nation and Step Mobile, and we worked together to teach and show others about financial literacy and how to build credit score at a young age. There was a contest to see how many people can enroll on the app and learn about the financial literacy on the app. And the school with the most students enrolled and on the app would receive, first place would be a twenty-five thousand dollar check as well as a music festival full of celebrities that we would obsess over. Second place would be at ten thousand dollars and third place would be five thousand dollars. After being in first for a very long time, we did have spring break, unfortunately, which led us to second place, which is still great because we have ten thousand dollars now. And we also have our Rock of Ages and Murder Mystery Dinner, which Casa Grande Drama presented their first musical Rock of Ages. And they also hosted an interactive murder mystery fundraiser, which is very fun and thrilling. And a couple of weeks ago, the ENCR students, first year students participated in the annual and very exciting happy week. It's full of bright colors and dancing and you have to, in a way, survive from a ship crash at sea. It involves a lot of communication, bonding, trust, coming out of one shell. And if you're just like me and staying to the top of your lungs, you lost your voice. And you may see that there is no picture of our new ASB executive board, but we did have our new executive board positions announced recently. And as of right now, the current board members are now teaching and mentoring next year's executive board. And speaking of which, full circle, whole moment. We actually had the San Antonio student of the semester come from McKinley. I, being current president, came from McKinley and next year's president, sitting out there is Rona, who was also a former member of McKinley. So, Mr. Harris, you were all our principal at one point.
All my former students.
Up next, we have every fifteen minutes, so this happens every four years, but due to COVID, it was pushed off. But it's a well-known program which returned to our school and taught us the consequences and actions of driving under the influence and distracted driving. It consisted of two days and there was the accident simulation, the car crash simulation. And the second day consisted of the memorial slash service. And people could choose to opt out if they did not feel comfortable with the idea of it and they would just be escorted to the library. But I think it was very educational and it served a purpose for many and it was great to, you know, really learn about what could happen in a reality crash. And as you can see, they did try to have fun, the people that were involved, they tried to make the best out of a difficult situation. And there were many field trips that Casa had, well, a couple of them being on March tenth. Students attended the California Hostess State Leadership Conference. And then during April, nine, eighty-nine seniors visited our state capitol, which was very fun. They got to be in Sacramento and get to meet some representatives. And on April eighth, journalism students, including the editor in chief and the round of producers, were able to learn more about journalism and the writing aspect of it all. And in April, our students visited the Legion of Honor. And up next, we have Teacher Appreciation Week, which ASB students created fun and awarding events for all teachers on campus to enjoy. And some of them included foods, cute notes, nice gifts and et cetera. And it's all just to show appreciation for the teachers that give so much to us. And coming up soon, we have our annual GQ charity event, based and inspired off of Coachella, we are calling it Gauchella. Um, it'll be held on May nineteenth, inspired by the famous Coachella, which actually happened a few weeks ago. Each contestant, senior, will represent a music artist to perform at our Gauchella. And it's just a fun and memorable, memorable event that seniors are able to participate in. And it also gives back to the community. I know some of the charities that will be represented are Miracle League, Unavida, and just the United Anglers of Casa Grande and another one, I cannot remember. Um, and starting tomorrow, um, yep. Starting tomorrow, we have the bear test. On Wednesday, all ENCR first students will participate in the well-known and loved bear test. For the next seventy-two hours, we will be tested on our knowledge of what to do if we encounter a bear in the wild. There are many obstacle courses we will go through and a bunch of events before school at like six in the morning, five in the morning, six PM in the afternoon, and surprises for a hundred and twenty of us. And the last bear test that was held to this level of extreme was two thousand and eleven. But yeah, I'm very excited. I hope I get no contacts with the bear, but we'll see at the end of it. And next, we want to recognize some of our students at Casa Grande. First, we have junior Sierra, who at the beginning of her junior year was offered to play at UC Davis. Just as a junior, she has verbally committed to play D one after graduating from Casa and she is a midfielder. And we also want to highlight Cody Cornelius, who only as a junior has already been offered to play football from five different schools after high school. Many of them being UNR, Eastern Michigan and San Diego State University. Being Division One schools as well. He has another season left to play, his senior season, and he is hopeful to hear from his top choice, UC Berkeley, and from inside of his sister. I've heard that he's been in contact and is very hopeful to get an offer soon. They do. And on the topic of San Diego State, we have senior Sophia Restiva, who is a senior who was accepted for SDSU in the fall. She recently tried out for their dance team and her results were incredible because now she's an official Aztec as a D one hip hop dancer. And next, we want to recognize the infamous Kane Parsons, a senior at Casa, who is well-known content creator, who has over seventy-two point five thousand followers on Instagram and over two point eleven million subscribers on YouTube. He also won a two thousand twenty-two Streamies for Creator Honor Award. And I believe last, we want to recognize Isaac Sullivan, who is a senior, an exceptional student at Casa Grande, who was very involved in our journalism program and class and what we have to offer. He was recently Senior of the Month not too long ago, some of you may remember him. Well, recently he committed to Stanford University for the fall of two thousand twenty-three and majoring in political science. And next, we will report on the grade levels. For the freshman class of two thousand twenty-six, they are just preparing for next year's ASB class and getting a gist of like the new members that'll be joining. They each have been selected, each person has their own responsibility that they will be in charge of for the next school year. And then there's the sophomore class of two thousand twenty-five, they're also preparing to finally be upperclassmen. Some of them will have positions on the executive board. But they each will also have individual responsibilities and jobs for the following school year. And very exciting, the junior class of two thousand twenty-four, the juniors had a junior formal and it was a beautiful night with lots of dancing. They are now getting into the full swing of planning their senior prom and also preparing to finally be seniors. And last, we have the senior class of two thousand twenty-three. Our prom is less than a month away now and we have many tasks to complete before the big day. We have our prom proposal contest going on, our ticket sales start next week, our prom royalty is in the works. And we have many exciting details, all leading to graduation in exactly a month from today. And for my last time for the board, thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Ms. Emily. Emily, thank you for spending so many Tuesday nights with us. We really appreciate all of your input and feedback, yeah, okay, stay for a picture after, okay?
Yeah, I just want to say, reiterate that your, your presence is always great, positive, energetic and informative, thank you.
And next up, we have the Trojans, do I have Pedaluma High?
All right, my name is Kenna Lowry and I'm Pedaluma High School's ASB Vice President and also presenting my last board report for the year, so. First of all, I'd like to start off with National Staff Appreciation Week, which is this week. Every year, we like create posters in the halls of different departments and try to recognize all the, all of our teachers. And this year, today, actually, we created something called a joy jar, where a bunch of kids from ASB put in little notes to a jar that any of the staff members can come grab as a little note of encouragement throughout their week or anytime they need it. And in March, we had our Trojan Quarterly, which was our senior pageant. And we raised almost ten thousand dollars for prom, so it was very successful. And a portion of that money also went to Miracle League for our People's Choice winner. The next section is going to be of students excelling recently. So our students of the month for the last three months have been Carson Delarosa, Langley Durham, Stephanie Cardiel, Teresa Slorio, Finn Veloz and Veronica Richardson. And these are all students that our teachers have felt have, went above and beyond in their academic and leadership qualities at school. And I'm sure you've seen some of them, so, yeah. And we also usually put our honor roll up here, but we didn't get the numbers for it this month. I also just wanted to say, I know Emily mentioned the walk-in that a lot of schools did and Pedaluma High participated in that and had a huge turnout for it. And it was just a really nice moment of like remembrance and just everyone coming together to stand against school violence, so. And some highlights from our spring sports teams is boys track, one Vival. The girls soppel team is going to playoffs. The boys golf team got second in league and our badminton team is going to NCS on Saturday. Um, in February, we had our junior dance, which was called the Snowball this year. It's like winter formal and they were raising money for their prom next year and they're also now planning it. This month is Mental Health Awareness Month and so that's something that ASB is really trying to recognize on campus. And so a few events that we have going on throughout the month are, uh, two days from now, I think, we have loga, yoga at lunch. And also the yoga instructor is like bringing tips on how to manage anxiety and different tools so that people can use this, like going into finals and just whenever they need it. And at lunch on May twenty-sixth, we're having a Bob Ross painting session where I think we're following a YouTube video and painting a Bob Ross painting so people can relax their minds before finals. And then, one second. So we brought Super Spring Week back last year, which was an old tradition at Pedaluma High School, where it was kind of just a big week that we wanted to celebrate as a school and like kind of looking forward towards summer and stuff. And so this is what our week is looking like on Monday. We're planning on having like a senior barbecue at lunch to kind of like as a bonding experience and stuff. We're still figuring out details if we can do it, but that's the current plan. On Tuesday, the theme will be in the tropics for like summer and there'll be a staff versus students kickball game at lunch. And then on Wednesday, after school, we have our flag football game. And at lunch, we are, um, the teach, some teachers vote on a chalk competition where students can get a square in the quad and do any chalk art that they want throughout the week leading up. And then on Wednesday, it's voted on. On Thursday, we have our senior rally where all seniors get recognized for what they're going to do in their future and the whole school goes and it's a very cool moment. And, and then that night, we have our senior sunset, because we have a senior sunrise at the beginning of the year, senior sunset, yeah. And then on Friday, we have the car show that we have every year. And we're planning on doing some sort of like carnival this year where classes will like go to the field during one of their periods and we'll have different like carnival type games and maybe like a coin candy machine and stuff. And we have money from PTSA that we're planning to use for that that we're very grateful for, so, yeah. And then the seniors are currently getting ready for our big event, prom. And it's at the Galleria this year and we're just figuring out the final details. This is last week to buy tickets, so we're gonna round up all our money and see what we can do. And on Cinco de Mayo, which was on Friday, we had our annual salsa guac competition, where any teachers or board members, actually, Mr. Harris made guacamole. They can compete and make either salsa or guacamole and then we give it out for free at lunch with chips and students vote on which they think was best. So, yeah, I think that's about it. And thank you all for letting me come this year, so, yes. And thank you all for letting me come this year, so, yes.
Thank you, Kenna. Thank you for coming up every month and helping us out, keeping us informed about what's going on in Petaluma. Petaluma High. Oh, go Bruins! All right, next up, can I have Valley Oaks?
All right. Um, my name is Patrick Hill Simon. I'm a seventh grader at Valley Oaks. I transferred from Kenilworth because I wanted to be in more control of my time. I like to get my schoolwork done on my own and at my own pace instead of a classroom of many people. And it's helpful for me to avoid all the typical social distractions I was experiencing. Valley Oaks is now offering courses through Ingenuity. I'm currently in two of them, math and English. I finished science as a regular science course at Valley Oaks and for PE, I take boxing lessons and attend Valley Oaks group workouts. I'm the first student to be in Ingenuity at Valley Oaks and my two teachers have been learning how to do it with me. I like the videos and practice questions in my Ingenuity courses and in math, I take pretests before every unit. And if I get no more than one error, it pushes me forward to the next unit. It is especially helpful because when students like me transfer, we have already been in a course, but we can't fully remember the topics we already covered in our old school. In English, my teacher edited their original course to fit my needs and she also gives me additional non-Ingenuity assignments. The Ingenuity courses will support students with career preparation. And an example of this is a junior at Valley Oaks who plans to become a vet is taking Latin one through Ingenuity. Valley Oaks students are often sick or traveling and with Ingenuity courses, they're able to continue working without any added stress of papers and books. Because of Ingenuity, Valley Oaks is now able to offer art and Spanish again after a few years of not having an art or a Spanish teacher. High school honors and AP courses are now offered through Ingenuity as well as courses like physics and chemistry, which has virtual labs. Also, this new year at Valley Oaks is that seventh and eighth graders are being accepted again. The new California law says that we have to be seen every day by a teacher. At Valley Oaks, we are coming in person three days a week for a study hall time or a teacher appointment. And then we are doing a regularly scheduled Zoom for the other two days. I don't mind sitting and working at Valley Oaks because I like seeing some people and talking a little bit. And it's helpful for me to have to get out of my house. I'm liking Valley Oaks and hopefully I can stay and in five more years from now graduate Valley, uh, Valley Oaks. Thank you.
Um, good evening. My name is Leith Amanasir and I started at Valley Oaks in. Okay, sorry. Good evening. My name is Leith Amanasir and I started at Valley Oaks in August as a freshman from PAX with no high school credits completed. By the start of the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four school year, I will have completed nearly one hundred college prep credits. This is nearly one half of high school and in many cases it is twice what other students complete in one year. I am on track to graduate very early. I have many goals for the future and I know that I am driven and focused and I have no problem with spending a lot of my free time doing schoolwork. Um, this is one of the reasons why Valley Oak suits me and a lot of other Valley Oak students so well. We are the type that like to do our schoolwork at a fast pace and not to be slowed down unnecessarily. We need the option to be able to see the entire course ahead of us and to have teachers that can track us and have curriculum prepared for us. I plan to enroll in JC courses starting in two thousand twenty-four and then to graduate early and become a full-time college student as soon as I can. The option for Valley Oak students to graduate early is also advantageous for older students in danger of dropping out or failing out. In the fall year, out, in the fall, every year, at least five seniors come to Valley Oaks who only need a couple of courses to graduate. They often have jobs and other adult responsibilities and feel unhappy about staying in high school unnecessarily all the way until June. These students get excited about finishing early, they lose their senioritis and get motivated about their future. Here are the seniors this year that came to Valley Oaks with the specific goal of graduating a semester early. Oops, I'm sorry. Um, I don't know, but. For typical sophomores and juniors, once they realize that it is possible making the goal of graduating early because a source of motivation in many areas of their lives. Students often realize it is possible to graduate early because they are asked to look at their transcript with at least one staff member, usually once a week. Hoping to graduate early helps them to stay on track and make good decisions and to look forward to their future. It gives them more control over their education and this empowerment helps many of them to be serious students. School is less just something to do or a place to see friends. I am enjoying being a student at Valley Oaks and I'm very grateful for it. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Reith Amanasir. And like my younger brother, I came to, uh, from PAX to Valley Oaks. Uh, and I like spending time at Valley Oaks because I enjoy its open space. And it's your ability to have all the free time that you like and move at your own pace about your school. I came here of, at freshman year to Valley Oaks, but I struggled a little for my first year. And then I moved to PHS where I got a three point eight GPA for that semester. But I came right back to Valley Oaks as soon as I could because I knew that that school could offer me possibilities no other school could. At a school like Valley Oaks, I could learn at my own pace, at my, whenever I wanted. And I could always avoid any situations I did not want to be at. Uh, kids that could struggle from introvertness, anxiety, or depression would enjoy the space that Valley Oaks offers. Valley Oaks has a quiet environment, no bells or crowds, just a couple of buildings and places to sit around and work. Every, everyone knows each other because it's such a small and tight knit community. Additionally, there are only more, a couple of teachers for each student to attend for every week. So students do not need to worry about being overworked throughout their weeks. Likewise, Valley Oaks is a safe place for students who, who feel they're outliers, as people as you mentioned. We have great counselors and we have great staff who always look out for students who are always there to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Valley Oaks. Wait, 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 wait. And last but never least, we have the Petaluma Adult School. Look, adults.
All right, you're gonna do the clicky, right? All right. She's gonna do it. Hello, everybody. I'm Nancy Manuelli, Principal of Petaluma Adult School, and I have with me tonight.
Amy Jasa, Program Manager for Adult Secondary Education.
Yes, and she's gonna stand. And she's doing the clicky. All right, so Petaluma Adult School is one of six members of the Sonoma County Adult Education Consortium. There are three funded members and three service providers. We are both of those things. We are WASC accredited and we got through our WASC in March, thank goodness. Six-year term with a mid-cycle. Yep. So, uh, fiscally, we are not funded through the general fund. We are funded through federal and state funds that we owe a two, uh, grant, as well as the California Adult Education Program Funds. Just want to point out that this, uh, we owe a grant is to, over twice as much as we had last year. And that's in large part because of our very successful high school diploma and equivalency program. The Adult Education Program areas were sometimes the best kept secret, but here, here, what's secrets out of the bag, we're letting it out tonight, hey? So we have, um, Adult Secondary Education Programs, English is the second language, K-12 Success is actually parent education. So the parent is the adult school student and the children come along with the parents, toddlers, preschoolers. Um, but it is for parent education and success. The Family Resource Center is located over at McDowell that serves all of Petaluma and all of Petaluma City Schools. CTE, we have a few online classes right now. We're hoping to kind of beef up our CTE offerings in the future and we're the LEA for Cal Regional Medical, which is clinical medical assisting and phlebotomy classes. We are also the LEA for the Bay Area roofers and waterproofers. And last but not least, we have our feel-good fee-based classes, which are community education classes. That's your art classes, your exercise, all that good stuff. Program attendance.
So the program attendance, you can see from year to year, uh, it's a little bit deceiving when you just look at these numbers. Uh, because what counts for a student to be, um, counted for attendance is they have to have attended for twelve hours. So for example, like high school diploma and equivalency, we enroll more than three hundred and fifty-nine students. But for various reasons, either positive or negative, um, they're not counted in this. So positive would be they got out and finished before the twelve hours is up, so yay. Um, and then on the other side, our students deal with a lot of barriers. So it could be that, um, they had to stop out for a little bit and we hope to welcome them back. Um, but they wouldn't also be counted in these numbers.
Our doors are always open for adult learners to return, resume their goals. Uh, the Petaluma Family Resource Center, I mentioned earlier, these are few of the folks that work there, some part-time, some full-time. And a number of services and classes that are offered, I'll just let you kind of read through a little bit. Um, the last one's kind of new, the CalFresh applications and, uh, support from Catholic charities onsite at the Family Resource Center. Those can be kind of arduous applications to complete and referrals. I always have to say, who can live without a diaper bank, right? Got to have that diaper bank. And of course, the Friday Food Bank. Avance is one of our parent nursery school or parent, um, parent programs. And some of the highlights, and Amy's just gonna look through these two slides right here. We have thirty-seven parents, which is thirty-seven parents plus their thirty-seven infants and toddlers that are in the Avance program enrolled this year with a hundred percent retention. Eighty-six percent of them are still present in the second semester and will graduate on May twenty-fourth. They do a number of field trips and I'll talk about the community, uh, guest speakers. So part of the Avance program is a resource hour, uh, for the parents. And so some of the speakers come from Verity, our Family Resource Center, Legal Aid First Five, and, uh, Pedal, I said Petaluma People's Services Center and Matrix. And our Petaluma Parent Nursery School Cooperative is over seventy-five years old, located on the back of the. Look. Hooray! We appreciate that. So some current pictures of all back in person, thank goodness. Petaluma Parent Nursery School Cooperative on the McKinley Campus. It's a great partnership. And some of their highlights this year included increasing scholarships, costs about twenty-five hundred dollars for a family to participate. And they've been able to offer a couple more full scholarships. Messy Art Day and in the center is our, uh, our, uh, our representation of Butter and Eggs Day, so there they are. They also take a lot of wonderful field trips. I won't go through them all. And then of course, uh, one component of the Petaluma Nursery School Cooperative is the Monday Night Parenting Classes. And my, um, director of that program said that these classes are to support families to teach skills needed to guide children through the early childhood years successfully, which is no easy task, right? Okay. English is a second language is another one of our programs and these are a variety. These are a few of the different types of classes we offer. The next slide shows you a couple of the newer classes we've started offering. One is an ESL Leadership Class, which is taught by one of our finest, uh, full-time ESL teachers. And so the gentleman you see in the left hand is a former Petaluma City Schools elementary school teacher who works part-time for Petaluma Adult School, offering a literacy level class and also some workshops to help parents be successful with their young children as they enter the Petaluma City Schools. The other people that you see there, the other gals, these folks all work for us in a variety of capacities with Petaluma Adult School. And they completed the recent, um, Leadership Class, ESL Leadership Class. And a couple of them have recently gotten their citizenship. Amy wants to point out our grad in the corner.
Okay, Mary, she passed the high school equivalency, so that was pretty exciting.
Definitely. Okay, Adult Secondary Education with Amy Jasa.
All right, so Adult Secondary Education for us encompasses all of Sonoma County. So we are housed in Petaluma, but we definitely have satellites and branches throughout Sonoma County. So you can see our list, our crew there of teachers, um, from Windsor, Santa Rosa, Sonoma, and Petaluma. Um, and so I want to focus a little bit on what's new, because some of these are, were last year's slides, as I mentioned. So I want to point out that we are expanding our morning offerings in Petaluma. So it used to be that nobody was coming in the mornings and everybody needed evenings. And I decided, well, if I'm going to be working, I might as well allow students to come in and hang out. So, um, I'm at McDowell on Monday mornings and I had success attracting students, especially those that work in hospitalities that have Mondays off, so it was kind of a sweet spot. So we'll be extending that to offer Wednesday mornings as well. Um, and then you can see with our diploma class offerings, uh, we're coming soon to Hannah. We were coming soon to Hannah last year too. Um, but their transition program was, there was a bunch of red tape and so we weren't able to fully, um, la- launch there, so hoping in September. And then NuNu is offering transition support to, um, Sonoma County Juvenile Hall students. So, um, I've enrolled a few students. I'll be out there on Thursday, um, to help, uh, incarcerated youth who will be exiting the program there in July, be able to transition to our program. And this is just a couple of nice little snapshots of our classrooms. And we have Windsor up there, Ridgeway, and then the three pictures there over at McDowell. So the seals represent the, um, high set sections past. So there's actually a whole nother wall. I just kind of fit it in my slideshow, so picture three of those. And then that's the Monday morning class there in the middle. Um, so I also, a lot of people ask, like, where do your students come from? Who are your students? So I did a little bit of digging just to kind of give you a visual represent, representation of who our students are before they graduate. So right now we have thirty-five graduates and counting, so we still have seven more weeks. Um, so this is definitely like the kickoff launch spot or cup starting to run over. Um, so you can see where our students come from, Petaluma City Schools is, uh, it's quite large. It's almost twenty-seven percent there. And then, um, Ridgeway, Santa Rosa is, is second with our newer spots down there. Sonoma and Windsor are smaller but growing. And then a lot of people want to know, like, who, how old are your students? Are they all eighteen? No, we have a wider range of students. So again, this is of the thirty-five you can see on the age of our students that graduate, uh, this year. And I just thought it's kind of nice to see from fifty-one to eighteen. And again, this is our graduates so far. Um, a lot of it is also representative of the time, right? So we had a huge graduating class, uh, when COVID happened and students had money to stay home and work remotely and online. And now we're kind of trickling back into, um, the, the more of the average, but we are gearing back up. So we had thirty-five right now. Um, and I will say, as I was running attendance, we have about forty finish line students. So Nancy said, well, how many do you expect to graduate? That's the magic question. Everybody wants to know how long. So hopefully we'll, we'll see more of those forty come through. Um, but one never knows. So, uh, just also seeing that you can see our subtests with high set, high set changed companies this year. So it was extra hard, um, with those growing pains and all of our partner schools are, are saying the same thing. So we're now getting used to it, getting settled, and we have quite a few students on the verge of completing the high set. And these are last week's recent graduates.
Yeah.
So those are just the, this week's recent graduates. I wanted just to give you a visual. They are, these are their grad packs that I have them, um, come see me for.
So I just wanted to point out about the, the high set. So the GED and the high set are essentially the same. The high set has five subtests. The GED has four, but they're essentially the same. The high set is available in Spanish and English. We have an outstanding Spanish high set test prep person. And so each one of those, I have sixty-one subtests that have been completed by twenty-seven students, more or less. I've passed this year, twenty-four scores are pending. That's part of the issue with our new, um, purveyor of the high set at the moment. Um, we also support Petaluma City Schools to help concurrent students, uh, seniors in our, our city schools to graduate. So we have current, eight currently working and seven have completed. That's one thing we'll help with. And the next slide.
Grad.
Grad, Petaluma City Schools. And thank you very much. We so much appreciate our cabinet, our board, our superintendent, everyone for the support for Petaluma Adult School over all of these years through thick and through thin. And there are some upcoming events there.
Graduations, Monday, the twenty-sixth. Mark your calendar. Thank you to everyone who presented. We're gonna take a quick two-minute break. But before everyone who presented, I want a picture of all of you up here with the board. Otherwise, Amy will kill me. So we're adjourning for two minutes. Environmental justice presentation.
So, thank you. You know, when we think about the kind of students that we send out into the world, I, I can't help but be more impressed by, um, the students that will be presenting next, their, uh, sense of service, advocacy, creativity, grit shines in, in all that they've been doing with this project. And, and so I'd like to ask Lisa to kind of, uh, And so I'd like to ask Lisa to kind of help introduce before they present.
Yeah. So happy and honored to be here and introduce this group of students. I got an opportunity to find out about Environmental Justice Coalition through going to some summer trainings up at SCO. And then found out that they have this amazing program that's offered to students, but they needed a mentor to do it. So I found out how to be a mentor and was able to then put this guy in charge of, you need to, we need to have at least six students. And he found them. And then they have spent an entire year working with SCO and meeting every two weeks in my classroom over at McNear to find out what, how to identify a problem, how to come up with a solution. And they will, at the end of this, they've worked all year together. And at the end of the year, they're going to get an environmental seal, an environmental justice seal on their diploma, which is really, really great. They're the first school in Pedaluma City Schools to get this, so we're hoping to keep it going. And they've just learned so many great life skills. And I'm going to let you, let them tell you the rest, but I couldn't be prouder of them.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zach.
I'm Grace.
I'm Sienna.
And I'm Olin.
And there's one more member that couldn't be here. His name is Reed. He's the junior. We're all seniors this year. And we are Trojans pantry. We're Pedaluma High's first year involved with Environmental Justice Coalition.
So the Environmental Justice Coalition is a part of the Sonoma County Office of Education. And this is their mission. We are committed to empowering students in order to foster civic engagement and inspire action on environmental issues in partnership of people of color or low socioeconomic status who have been disproportionately impacted by negative environmental disasters and stewardship.
Okay, so about us. Okay, so our driving question that like, yeah. How can we bring healthy food to lower socioeconomic families at school, educate about healthy food options, and reduce plastic waste and food waste at the same time? Okay.
Our goals are to improve the food choices that are provided at our schools by offering to students in schools and during, or for all grade levels and lower socioeconomic students that rely on their food for energy, just a better source of food to give them at schools. We also want to reduce waste and we want to reduce waste so that there's not leftover food being thrown away and just left so nobody has to eat it or nobody can eat it. And we want to educate people. So our goal is to be able to teach students and teach about our project about how eating nutritious food choices can be beneficial. And lower socioeconomic students may not have been educated about good food choices and healthy eating habits.
So this is a little bit about our research. We, at the beginning of our kind of path, we researched a lot about environmental justice and nutrition and environmentally conscious nutrition choices that weren't really happening at our school. A lot of plastic, a lot of, just what we've seen here. We searched up Pedaluma City Schools lunch menu and breakfast menu. And through our research, we saw this kind of sharp difference in the lunch menu and breakfast menu. As you can see, lunch menu has a lot of diversity with their nutrition. You got protein, vegetables, grain, fruit, and it's a very well-balanced meal. But when you look in the breakfast menu, there's maybe one fruit option, apple or pear, always chocolate milk, always cereal, sugar like Fruit Loops or something like that. So a lot of sugar, processed foods. And what is really disappointing is that this breakfast menu that we have is the first meal some students are getting in their morning. And so all of their energy is coming from that. And it doesn't really last long and isn't very helpful for growing minds and trying to go through the whole day just off that breakfast. And so we saw this and we kind of put all of our efforts into seeing how we could solve it and also educate about healthy choices.
So the next thing we researched was nutrition standards around California for the different grade levels and ages of kids. So first thing we looked at was pre-K, because we had taught pre-K and we just looked into that throughout our journey with this. So we looked at the nutrition standards for pre-K. And so for this one, it says to demonstrate a beginning understanding that eating a variety of food helps body, the body grow and be healthy, and choose from a variety of food at mealtimes, as well as indicate food preferences that reflect familial and cultural practices, which we thought was really important. And we always wanted to incorporate that into our teaching on education, the cultural differences with food and make sure that kids not only learn nutrition, but learn that as well. And then we also looked at the K through 12 California Public Schools standards for PE. And two examples for, I believe, second grade were, explain how the intensity and duration of exercise as well as nutritional choices affect fuel use during physical activity and explain the effects of nutrition and participation in physical activity on weight control, self-concept, and physical performance. And so these were just a few examples of the different standards that are supposed to be reached for all the grade levels. We noticed that in the K through 12 PE standards, that every single grade from K through eighth has this in their PE. And reflecting from our experiences in PE, we had never even known that that was something we're supposed to learn. So a lot of people may not be learning that. And then after eighth grade, through the high school years, we noticed that they didn't have that teaching anymore. But what we reflected on was, by the time you're in high school, it is thought that you've already learned this and for years and years and years. But a lot of high schoolers may not even know the benefits of eating nutritious food and making the choices yourself.
So Grace and I went to McDowell Elementary School and we sort of learned about the food situation that was going on there in terms of their nutrition. And the main thing that we learned about was the Charlie cart, as seen in the picture. And what that does is it's sort of like a portable thing that schools can buy that helps teach like, up to around 30 kids, how to make their own nutritious food at home, because it's equipped with like a sink, a blender, a microwave, a toaster, measuring cups, and a bunch of other stuff that can be used to help make nutritious food for themselves. And so if they learn how to do it in school, they can make it at home and just always know how to give themselves nutrition.
Okay, cool. So recently, this was like last month, we went to Forests Old Elm Child Development Center, like pre-K. Pre-K and it's over by, on the east side by Lucky's. And so we did, we performed a skit because we thought it would be most engaging for this age level. And we did like, me and Sienna dressed up as fruits and vegetables. And we did a little skit. We had Reed and Olin. Reed was given healthy food at his snack time. And then Olin was given like a sugary cereal. And they kind of both performed like a race. And we showed how it affects your energy level and your mind at school. And yeah, and then we went into like, kind of like a food tasting thingy majig. We got, we had like, our whole thing was like the rainbow and showing how you should eat the rainbow, because it just like resonates with kids. And we gave her like, we had tomatoes and bell peppers and like two fruits and vegetables for each color. And then they actually really enjoyed it. And every kid went around, it was like, banana, I want more. Like it was, and like they really enjoyed it. And some of them learned different fruits and vegetables. And our hope for this is that they came away with excitement and are inspired to try new foods at home. So that carries on through home life and school life, so they can make nutritious, you know, choices for themselves.
And then shortly after, this was our second presentation that happened at McNear Elementary. We did the same kind of skit to TK class and also my mom's four through six special ed class. And it was the same skit where Reed ate an apple and Olin ate some Fruit Loops for snack and kind of demonstrated how the apple gave Reed enough energy to run fast and be attentive in class. And our whole focus for the skits was that eating fruits and vegetables helps you have a strong mind and body. And we wanted to show that with the class and with the race. And so yeah, we went during our lunch break, quickly went over, had a presentation, then went back to school. And so this kind of was a little test to see if we could do this. And we could, and we could also do this to other classes during lunch, some quick presentation that, and we had like a little chat with the students after, like, oh, what's your favorite fruit? What's your favorite vegetable? And kind of had that, get them talking about that kind of stuff.
So just a few weeks ago, we went to the Environmental Justice Coalition's sharecase. So there's a bunch of schools that participate in the Environmental Justice Coalition. And so we have multiple meetings throughout the year, but it all leads up to this big sharecase at the end. So all the different schools come together and we all created a booth. So this is our booth. We wanted to do that rainbow of fruits and vegetables again. And then we had a table, a little plate with the bad stuff. But you could also try the, you could try, we had some raspberries, blackberries, and radishes. And all of them got eaten, so that was good. And all this stuff you could try. We got to share our video that we created that went over our whole journey through it, the problem we wanted to solve and how we went about solving it. And then we also got to connect with other schools and just see how they decided to tackle environmental justice. And there's all the different aspects of that. And that was really cool, just connecting with different schools throughout Sonoma County and sharing our project. Different people from the community came. People from Pedaluma City Schools, Boys and Girls Club, all these different people that wanted us to teach kids that they are like, want, have Boys and Girls Club asked us and different teachers as well. So that was really a good opportunity for us. And then at the end, something that was really important was we ought to do a whole reflection with all the different groups. Like what went well? What did you learn through this like team bonding and leadership kind of thing? And that is really helpful for us to reflect on as to move forward with the project into the future years.
What's next for us is grants. For next year, we want to, we want to get some grants to help fund other projects that we might work on. For example, building a garden for schools that don't already have one, so that they can grow their own nutritious foods there and teach the students that attend those schools about that. Or maybe create a Charlie cart for students, because it'd be more cost-effective. And that could be a really good way to teach younger students about nutritious goals.
And we also want to continue educating more classes. I think this was kind of like low-hanging fruit for us. And I think it was what, like outreach is what kind of got the ball moving. And I think we wanted to, Reed will bring in some new students, but continue to educate younger students.
And then more into educating, get teachers involved. We kind of are there to start this new nutrition class and awareness. But we also want teachers to be involved in this process so that they can teach their students and they can see that, oh, this skit and this presentation doesn't take too much time. And they can see that they're able to do it. And we can help them as well by coming to their classes, but also get that mindset of nutrition into the classrooms.
And lastly, we want to recruit some new students to continue our mission next year. Like we said, the four of us are seniors, but Reed, who's not here today, is a junior. And he already has a few people that are eager to join. One of his good friends even was so eager, he came to our sharecase and was really interested, like saw all the other projects and helped us out with ours. And so it's exciting to see somebody who's already excited about it and they aren't even a part of it yet. And so hoping that we can get a few more students that are super eager about and willing to give time and effort into this, so that we don't just end our project this year. We continue it for as many years as we can keep it going and keep reaching more and more new goals.
And yeah, as a kind of reflection, we, as a whole, have learned a lot through this experience. Me personally, I've gained and sharpened a lot of people's skills and working as a team and working with other people and kind of building on each other's ideas. I think we worked very well as a group and were able to incorporate our own ideas to the project. And I think when looking back, everyone can say that there's definitely one part in this project that they can call their own. We're always very inclusive and hearing out each other's ideas. And I think one part that will be stick with me is teaching at the Forests Old Elm. It was a very cool experience to, I was like first time teaching kids and we didn't know what to expect. And we're kind of taken aback at how excited they were and eager to learn. And it was just a really cool experience, for sure.
Yeah, for me, the most impactful was definitely teaching that first experience. We didn't, like you said, we didn't know what to expect at all. And just the excitement we got, people like, when we're serving the fruits and vegetables, kids coming back asking for more over and over and over. And just connecting with us personally, like on whole different levels than we expected. Like we didn't know like what it would be like to teach these young kids, but they were so, so eager. And that is really like inspirational for teaching more in the future about stuff like this. And just seeing how much such a little five-minute presentation and giving them some options to try can just make a big difference. And we hope that that would go, they could go home and tell their parents about that and make a difference at home and just in their life right, like as of right now.
What I took away from this experience was, I mean, my intent was like, oh, like I was just, I didn't know what to expect. And it kind of grew into something more. And it's really exciting, because like I can carry this knowledge and this kind of background into my future, because I'm, I want to study nutrition and my major is nutrition and food science. So like, that's really exciting for me. And I have this knowledge that, I don't know, that can help me, I guess, in the future.
I think the big thing that I took away from this is because I was new to Pedaluma this year and I transferred from CASA, was getting to meet the people in this group and like further build relationships. And it really helped me, because I have classes with all these people. And already knowing somebody from this group made it a little easier to like socialize.
Thank you, guys.
I would definitely recommend, in addition to getting more teachers involved, getting more staff like from Nutrition Services, because they'll tell you how we sneak nutrients into those Fruit Loops and chocolate milk. It's a little, it's a little less bad than it sounds, I promise. But we got to make the kids think it's bad.
Are you going to show the video?
I mean, it's kind, you can, but it's kind of the same. It's like the same information.
Oh, we don't have access.
I do have some questions. I, yeah, and I have some questions, actually. So I've met you guys before at the Climate, our Climate Action Committee. They presented. And you guys, I've just always inspired you, and I love what you've done. I love how you took something and really ran with it. And I was wondering, I don't think I asked you before, if any of you knew that much about nutrition before you took that on as your project?
Personally, I don't really think so. I mean, my mom is into it and stuff. And so in my household, I was always taught it, but not in a sense of this, of how it's being taught at schools, if it's, if it's being taught, and like all the benefits and ways you can teach about it. So not really, I don't think, for me, not in this sense at all.
Yeah, I had no prior knowledge of nutrition before starting this, so it really broadened my horizons when it came to this.
I think I definitely had a sense about nutrition, just from like my mom and how I was raised up, that she kind of always taught me about what is healthy, what I shouldn't eat, and why, like the energy that you get from eating healthier and how it makes you feel. And I definitely, I also kind of had a knowledge that maybe some students didn't get this. And not until we did this project, I really understood the scope of how many students aren't getting this education and how it is affecting them. We didn't talk about this, but we kind of had, I don't know where we found it, but there's this cycle where parents aren't, don't have the knowledge about nutrition and then are, don't, aren't teaching their kids. And then they're going through school not making like healthy eating choices or maybe eating the Fruit Loops instead of the apple. or maybe eating the Fruit Loops instead of the apple. And they are, don't have as high levels of energy and focus as other students. And then they're not performing as well maybe. And it's just this cycle where it keeps families in low socioeconomic climate in those areas and doesn't really give them the chance to excel and give them the same opportunities. Yes.
Do you guys want to take your posters? Or you can leave it. It's beautiful. That was a lot of work.
And next up, we have an update on Diversify Our Narrative.
Yeah, so Diversify Our Narrative has been an important initiative for PCS. So I'm happy to have some of our teachers present on what they've been doing with Diversify Our Narrative. So I'd like to invite Casa Grande High School representatives and Petaluma High School representatives.
All right. Okay. Good evening. I am Shereen Jackson, English Department Chair at Petaluma High School. I have taught there since 2004 and I am a Petaluma High School graduate.
And I'm Krista O'Connor. I have been an English teacher at Petaluma High since 2001.
Thank you for allowing us to come speak to you about the work the Petaluma High School English Department has been doing over the past several years to bring new texts to our students in all of our courses. We are here because of your request to learn more about our efforts in this area. We heard the Diversify Our Narrative presentation to the board on February 14th, and we felt that there was some important information that needed to be added. In addition to our slide presentation, we have given each of you a packet with other information related to our curriculum and some samples of lessons that we currently use for one of the texts. We are happy to provide more information if you would like. The packet also includes information about some of the texts that are taught in our ELD classes. So we want to start by giving you some background information. In 2017, the district's ELA/ELD State Adoption Committee was unable to secure State Department of Education adoption funds and out of necessity have continued to use our ELA program materials first put into use in 2002. The anthologies from 2002 are still the only ones we have available to us today, apart from the materials for which we ourselves have scraped together funding over the past several years. Just this spring, the district provided additional funding for added texts. During this time, we have worked to include some underrepresented voices in a variety of texts to complement and enhance the core literature, and we would like to share some of these efforts with you. This slide shows the texts that we were using in 2019 and in years prior to that. The ones that have asterisks were core literature, so ones that we all taught. And the ones that do not have asterisks were texts that we could choose to teach at those levels.
So we wanted to take a minute and talk about the Expository Reading and Writing Curriculum as well. We adopted that in 2017, but we've actually been using components of it as early as 2008. So that is the Cal State University curriculum that was designed to encourage high school seniors primarily to do more critical reading and thinking and writing to be better prepared when they entered Cal State Universities or really any post-secondary institution. So we helped to develop the 3.0 modules and adopted those in fall of 2001. And the new 3.0 modules actually include more intentionally the designated and integrated ELD components, English Language Development components. So we're excited about the new curriculum. We were able to acquire some new materials that way. And the course really does, even though it focuses mostly on rhetorical strategies, it really includes a wide range of, of genre, fiction, poetry, drama, et cetera. So our participation in the grant, we did this for a few reasons. One of the reasons was because we were invited to help participate in the study to see if we brought some of the coursework down to the junior level, would that better prepare our juniors to perform better on the task tests in their junior year? So you know that for the, for the California State Tests, we only test, we, we test only juniors. From eighth grade on, it's only the juniors who take the test. So we, we did participate in the grant. We went for three summers to summer institutions that were directed by the Cal State University staff. And we were also able to get funding through our participation. And we did acquire some new titles that we used with our juniors and with our seniors in both the ERWC, the Pilot 11th Grade Class, and the, and the regular senior class that we taught. So, is that mine as well? Trying to share. So we were trying really actually kind of desperately to come up with money to purchase books. And Paul Cochran in our department has really done a tremendous job in bringing the conversation to the forefront of our department meetings. He gave us a presentation back in 2019, and he had been researching some of, you know, the titles that we could purchase, that we could possibly incorporate and purchase. He and Jesse Redfield did write some grant proposals, and we did purchase Poet X and Dear Martin, some class sets of those, you know, just as a kind of a starting point. And then Paul has been doing a lot of work to review titles. And so he wanted us to just share that he's been, you know, it's actually a great blog if you wanted to take a look at it at some point. So we know that Diversify Our Narrative has been part of the conversation over the past several years. It predates the student organization that was started by the Stanford Students in 2020. But it was around the fall of 2020 that we received an email from a group of Petaluma High School students, and they were sharing the Diversify Our Narrative petition, and they wanted us to take a look at it. And as a result of that, we did begin to look at their resources. So it really was that group of students at Stanford in June of 2020 that decided to make this a statewide and then of course a nationwide initiative. And this slide shows a group of the students from Stanford, Yale, University of Chicago, UC Berkeley, USC, and Turpin High School. So this group of students actually led the training that trustee Cloud and Shereen and I and Kelly Cavanas, one of our world language teachers, attended that fall. So of course, it was online, it was Zoom. But the having difficult conversations in the classroom was something that we participated in and we received materials from them as well at that point in time. And I've continued to use a lot of those materials in my class, kind of as foundational just for students to begin exploring identity, to explore the relationship to the literature, the relationship to various aspects of the cultures in the texts that we read as well as their own.
In the fall of 2021, Maite Hurey shared a spreadsheet with English teachers at San Antonio High School, Valley Oaks School, Carpe Diem High School, Sonoma Mountain High School, Petaluma High School, and CASA. We were asked to provide a wish list, but we were told that funding for purchase was undetermined at that time. At Petaluma High, our English department members spent several meetings discussing a range of titles and adding our choices to the list. This school year, we were told that there was money for textbooks. So we asked for the following to supplement the existing book sets that we had gotten with the grants prior and with supply money prior, and for new book sets. So 64 copies of Born a Crime by Trevor Noah, 64 copies of Song of Achilles by Madeline Miller, 300 copies of Just Mercy by Bryan Stevenson, and 31 copies of I Am Malala by Christina Lamb and Malala Yousafzai. So we received these additional books in March of this year. For these next slides, I want to show you what we are, what we currently have as our text, because I know that you have been wanting to know what we are currently teaching in our classes. The bold texts are the ones that are core literature, so those are the ones that all of the teachers will teach. For some of the core literature, teachers have a choice between one text or another. And then also in addition, like, these are the, the major texts that we teach, but we also of course include a lot of shorter works like videos, poems, articles, short stories, et cetera. And we've not necessarily included all of those in these, this presentation. And some of those are listed in the packet that we gave you. So you can see core texts at English IX are Persepolis, To Kill a Mockingbird, and Romeo and Sheik, Romeo and Juliet. And then we're going to be adding Just Mercy to Core next year, and that's going to replace To Kill a Mockingbird as Core. Honors English IX has very similar texts to college prep ninth grade. English X are core literature. We have Born a Crime, or Things Fall Apart, and then Greek mythology, which can include, or Song of Achilles, and that can also, would also be supplemented by Greek mythology selections. And then Honors English X would have the same core literature, but then some other additional texts as well. AP English XI, we have a number of different speeches, documentaries, a novel and a play/film, some short stories and poetry articles. And this class is nonfiction based. For 11th grade, we have as core texts, A Raisin in the Sun, The Great Gatsby, and then a choice between The Poet X and Dear Martin. And then for our ERWC, which is the college prep English 12 class, these are the, oh wait, this is one of yours. These are our core, core texts. And then we also have these as the ERWC core modules. And then AP English Literature. You're, you know, you have all of these in your packet as well. I don't need to read them off, off to you. As we continue to work together to find resources and funding to bring a wide range of literature, both contemporary and traditional to our students, we hope that we can have clear conversations about what's happening and what's needed. And of course, if you have any questions or would like more information or materials from us, you can let us know. We are happy to provide that for you. We're proud of the work we have done together as a department in spite of our limited resources, and we hope that the board understands how committed we are to our programs and to our students' learning.
Hi, good evening. I'm Katie Pishoda. I am an English teacher and the code department chair at Casa Grande High School. A newer gout show, I'm originally from Southern California. Matthew and I actually both started in Lawndale. So now I'm here and excited to share with you just some of the work that the Casa English Department has been doing. It's definitely feels a little hard to follow up Petaluma, but I'm gonna do my best. So 2020, 2021, that's really when our department realized, we, we do a lot of these organic practices. There's things that we're doing, practices that we have, texts we're incorporating, but there weren't any intentional structures behind it. We didn't have things written down so that we could then justify it and back it up. So that's when we started putting this together on a document, a live document that could live and grow. It's linked here as well, so you're more than welcome to see our scope. And this really gave us an opportunity to not only outline everything that we had, but also have us reflect and figure out, okay, well, maybe I do need to mix up a little bit what I'm teaching or this is what we have available, let's see what else we can do. So it was just a nice way to take what we're already organically doing, putting it on paper, and giving that opportunity for reflection. And more importantly, this started the dialogue around our text selections. So though, over the summer, as we dug a little deeper into this, we realized it's not just about the books, it's about texts in general. It's about the dialogue and the discourse in general happening in the classroom. And we really realized that there's this iceberg effect, right? We just see the book at the top and we don't necessarily have an opportunity to share everything else that's going into it and all of the other experiences, supplementary texts, poetry, articles, speeches that may be going into it, dialogue, you know, conversations going on in the classroom, and that we needed to maybe have some of that transparency. Oops, sorry. We needed to have some of that transparency so that we can see that full picture of what's actually going on in the classroom. And additionally, that's the point when we realize, well, we need to have this in our, in our curriculum scope. And so we took the extra step and we started adding extra hyperlinks and just having more resources. Because as we've had more teachers join CASA, we've had, you know, quite a large number of new English teachers joining us. We want to make sure that they're aware of what those texts are and what's available to them. Serendipitously, Lindsay and Maite then visited us, our class, in the fall, and they also shared with us the Diversify Our Narrative text list. They also shared with us the board's goals and how there was a goal to find a way to find funding so that we could get these books. Through that discussion, our department all agreed that at the least, while we're waiting for books, while we're exploring this, we would at the least make sure that we work towards creating in-classroom libraries so that way students at least have exposure and they have access, easy access to these books. Or that teachers are creating small literature circles or independent reading opportunities so that way students have that choice to be able to pick a text that they either identify with or they want to explore a new perspective. They're able to have that and then participate in small group discussion around it. And then throughout the year, we continued this conversation. We discussed what are the best texts that could support our students. And again, not just the books, but what are those supplemental texts? What are the poems? What are the speeches? Do we need to have common core speeches in addition to the books? And just kind of explored all these different, different avenues. We also began reviewing the text lists and just making sure that we were not picking a book just because it's another book, but we're strategically picking books that meet the Lexile goals of our students that, that properly support the, the themes that we're teaching. We just wanted to be meaningful and thoughtful with any books that we were bringing in. And two of our veteran teachers shared an amazing diverse text list of books that they had taught before. This was wonderful for us as well because it just provided a wonderful foundation of texts that were already vetted by teachers because they had taught the texts before. So by the start of 2022, one of our teachers, we, you know, he was very determined to be able to start this in-classroom library. And so we were able to find site funds to be able to purchase a library collection of diverse texts for him to have in his classroom. And then in May and June of 2022, we put together our wish list of books that we would like to have in our classrooms as well. In September of this current school year, we submitted this list and we are awaiting, or we requested 15 copies of each text, again with the purpose to absolutely have this small in-classroom library and give teachers an opportunity to explore these texts further and figure out what we may want to order full class sets of. But even as we're waiting for this, our teachers have still continued to find ways to add a variety of voices in the classroom, whether it's using a PDF of a book or using a shorter text, using speeches, using nonfiction, using articles, just doing whatever they can. And so we continue to develop our English curriculum. So what's next? We are waiting for our books. We were told they are ordered and they should be here any day now. But that's definitely gonna be, I feel like, a big step for us. And we are continuing to read and explore a variety of voices and trying to figure out how we can integrate it into our teaching, continuing this conversation, continuing to develop our curriculum, and sharing best practices for incorporating these. So we just want to know that as teachers, we're not alone with navigating this. We want to work together and really share our resources. So that's it. Thank you so much.
I just want to thank you for this. Do any of my student trustees have any questions?
No, I just want to thank you for this. I've been kind of wanting to see this, and I know it's a lot of work and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, now I'll open it up for any questions anybody has. First, my students.
I don't have a question. So does anyone with a question want to go first? This is just a comment. Okay, got you. Thank you. So with my years of taking English at PHS, I actually had Miss Jackson for my freshman year. Amazing. So some of the literature that we had read throughout those years, even in my sophomore year, had definitely made a huge impact on me. It might help a little bit that English is one of my favorite subjects, but definitely some of the books that I've read even in the past years, like Dear Martin, and They're There, and Homegoing, and some others have definitely. opened a lot of my classmates' eyes to a lot of issues that are going on in the world that some of us may have already been aware of, but it's really nice, especially specifically with the book Homegoing, that it teaches a lot of the students some facts that weren't taught in their elementary schools, or they might have never known about if they hadn't read it. And not only are they attaining the information from those books, but they're also learning the skills about in AP, in AP Lit, how to read literature like a professor. So they're taking apart the literature and learn and learning why authors do the things that they do. And a lot of these books that I've read in school are definitely going to stick with me for a long time. So I'm really grateful that you guys are doing this.
Yeah, I have to agree with me about that, because like throughout the years, the teachers do introduce like so many new books, and while some of them are a lot harder to read than others, like Shakespeare, they do, they are very eye-opening to the culture and the different types of culture, because these are things that we wouldn't usually learn about. For example, with Ms. Pishoda, I read about Henrietta Lacks, an African American about health and cancer. And then I also read about kite runner, about Arabs, and about political asylum. And like, these are like just some things that we basically never learn about in school unless we're taking like, you know, maybe like a push or things like that. And so that exposure really is crucial for our development. And also, it helps a lot with not just culture, but kind of like Mia said about like all that rhetorical analysis and all those English skills that we do need to learn about.
Fresh off is I test today, too.
Thanks. I just want to say thank you for that presentation. Really appreciate your efforts. I really loved in the Pedalumahai, you showing the before and after, because the there's a noticeable difference. The before, honestly, it looked like my, you know, from 40 years ago, my my reading list. And then, you know, the after, we've got some authors from the from this century, which is fantastic. I'd love to see something comparable, you know, at Casa Grande. And I wanted to ask, you know, maybe this goes to Tony or just to raise the issue, you know, can we do this effort at the junior high and even even at the elementary school level?
Katie did have theirs linked in the presentation.
Not the before and after, but we have our current book selection list.
A before and after, because it is really, because when I was teaching there, it was a different list.
Yes.
And what I really appreciate about what I saw in the Pedaluma one is it didn't look like to me that you can get through any path of English without getting exposure to that diversity.
And and what I would just finish with is that we had the awareness even ahead of 2017 that we wanted newer books and we wanted to bring a more diverse selection to our students, but truly it has been, funding has been a significant issue. And we would continue to use the books we had, because those are the books we had. So even the fact that we have more even digital choices, or just that there's some funding that's been opened up, I feel that that's really moving us in the right direction, but but it truly is our intention to continue to offer students a wide variety of voices, experiences, and and to make to be able to make those connections. So we appreciate you as well.
Very much appreciate the funding.
I have a question. One of the slides you talked about how some of you and Maddie went to a seminar to talk about having difficult conversations in the in the classroom. Has there been any like PD about this? Like for the rest of the English department teachers?
So there has not, but my husband is going to be attending a training about having difficult conversations in the classroom in the summer, and he's going to be, he is supposed to offer trainings after he goes to that. And so that's going to be one of the things that we're offering in August as a PD.
For the district or just for Pedalumahai?
Okay.
And then I have another question. What related to that, what type of issues have you encountered when introducing these texts? Or what have you anticipated?
Good question. And I would just add to wish to sharing that in the 12th grade level, I have shared some of those materials with the other ERWC teachers, and they've picked up portions of them. Again, you know, kind of having to do with identifying your own position in the world, and then how do you relate that to the text or or other issues? I would say in answer to your question, for one thing, in the freshman year, students don't take a history class. Their social science class is their human interaction class, but they don't take a formal history class. So for a long time, we, as the freshman teachers, have felt that we need to use the literature in that kind of historical context. So even when we were reading of Mice and Men, when we were reading To Kill a Mockingbird, we would bring up some of the issues that are in those texts. And for me, in Honors nine, and even my college prep nine over the years, asking students to look at the way that Harper Lee addresses gender issues, racial issues, social class issues, I feel like like it is an opportunity. And I remember when there was a student panel, and I believe it was on Zoom, but one of the students said that that was that person's first opportunity to really explore some of those issues with that particular text. So even though, you know, some people might consider it questionable in terms of the position of the author, it still provides opportunities to raise some of those questions. And I think a lot of these texts that we're adding, we can, as you said, you know, build those conversations into the classroom and give students an opportunity through journal writing, through writing prompts, through conversations to start having those harder conversations. Some, you know, every group of students is different. Every year it's different. So we just continue to try to open things up for people to have those conversations. It's not always easy, but that's the difficult conversation part. We do it anyway, right?
Any other questions or comments?
I I have. So I I was, you know, one of the things that that has, I think you, both schools are just doing an amazing job and really, you know, starting this process. And I guess what I'm, I keep thinking about, and I've talked hopefully to a couple of you about this, is a district-wide recognition and a district-wide consistent, maybe not a curriculum, but something so that, like at CASA, do you have common practices so that you know that these ideas, this diverse difficult conversations are being had in each class? So do you have any? I mean, that's where PD comes in. That's where it's really important, but I it feels to me like it's still very much still individual teachers, and then it's on the backs of the individual teachers to create the curriculum that will then inform the students about that particular text. Is, do you think that that's kind of true now? And it feels like it's changing a lot, but it, for me personally, I'd like to see a lot more collaboration and comprehensive curriculum that's then helps teachers in that it's consistent in the classrooms more, if that makes sense.
Yes, and and even in my time at CASA, we've discussed a lot about how we can create a vertical alignment and how a big root of that is making sure that we're holding each other accountable for having these conversations, for teaching certain aspects of text. So that way, when students move on to the next grade level, we know, okay, they they already got this, so we can dive a little deeper into it. And just, you know, again, my previous experience down at Lawndale, as we moved, I helped develop their vertical alignment down there. You know, I wish we could snap our fingers and it would happen overnight, but it definitely, it's a slower process. And I feel like our wheels are definitely going in the right direction and just continuing to get support with moving, you know, doing professional developments, having the books available. It's definitely going in that direction. And it'll be exciting to see four or five years how fully developed and built out it is.
So do you use your Wednesdays for for, you know, for your department meetings to talk about vertical? I mean, we've been talking about vertical alignment here for, you know. How long have we been? So I'm, I was just, you know, are you able to use that time for those kinds of things, or do you need more time?
Definitely more time. So, okay. Yes, I would definitely say more time. The the time that we have with our departments, it's briefer and we have to get through quite a bit. And again, this is just from my previous experience when we were working towards vertical alignment and more collaboration. Collaboration was happening on a weekly basis. But it's just finding more of that time, right? We just need more time, more money. No big deal.
Always, always.
And just to kind of add to that, you know, as we move forward to next year, we've been looking at our PLN times and trying to make and trying to explore how we can make that much more meaningful and systematic and and really be a great opportunity to to explore with the the school sites, utilizing those PLN times and seeing how we can build that particular vertical articulation as well as across school sites and maybe build that some of that alignment in there. But it's a process that we'll take and and work together on how and how that might look like for next year.
So I have a question, not for the teachers. What's happening at Lake San Antonio and Valley Oaks and Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain? Yeah.
So today at our principal's meeting, we reiterated diverse narrative, reiterated that, you know, we we set funding aside. We're, we are also adding additional funding into the instructional materials block grant to help support that. There isn't a lot of funding for instructional materials in general. I don't think that we get a bucket of money, and maybe Chris can weigh in on that. So we we have to be creative and making sure that we can adequately give the schools what they need and want in regards to this. At the elementary sites, some schools have been begun planning, creating committees. MCCV is doing that and and looking at what the middle schools are doing. I haven't got a report from the other alternative sites, but I'll follow up with them and see if they can provide some updates for for what they're doing.
Awesome. Yeah, it would definitely be good to know it. They're doing it. And even if it's not as in-depth as both of those wonderful presentations, knowing, I think a lot of us really like seeing the before and after, even if it's acknowledging that we're not all the way at the after, knowing.
I don't know if there is an after.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Before and now, before and now. And that, that actually reminded me of my other question is, how, I mean, yeah, how often do we revisit this and where where's the district's role in maybe like prodding, like once, if these three wonderful people retire or move to a different district, like what's our role in prodding English departments and not making it self-startered?
Well, first of all, you're stuck with me for a while, so.
Not a problem.
I mean, this is, at least at Pedalumahai, and I would imagine at CASA, like, these are just ongoing conversations. Like, we recently, when I sent out a a meeting agenda for a department meeting, one person, because I always put a spot for people to like, what are other things that I haven't put on here that you want to talk about? And one person was like, hey, can we make a change to what we are saying is core for 10th grade? Have it be this and this instead of this and this? And so like, it's, it's something that's brought up. And then like every year, at the beginning of the year, we look at what we have as our core, and we look at our department agreements. And so it's, I mean, it's an ongoing thing, which requires ongoing support from our school board.
Time and money.
Yes.
I would just like to say, I've always believed that literature does not exist in a vacuum. So when you talked about like Reading Mice and Men and putting that into what was going on in the world? Why was it okay for them to treat the the one black guy the way they did?
We're all marginalized in that book, just saying.
Yeah, well, yeah, the women, the women, the disabled, the people of color. But anyway, so I really appreciated you, you hearing that, you saying that. And I think that can go, even if the kids are 10th, 11th, and 12th, and they're in history classes, they still need to understand, in my opinion, what was going on? Why was this book written? You know, and then that opens up a lot of supplemental materials, so. Good.
So I I believe what our teachers are doing, especially the ones I presented here, have done some wonderful things in regards to diverse narrative. As a district, we want to continue to encourage that. And though I don't know to what extent as a district, we go down and make demands about things, but I think if we work together and as a district, we create an environment where those things can thrive, then I know that they'll take that and be able to do a lot more than than maybe what they're currently doing now and be able to expand and enhance a lot of those things. So in one way, what we'll try to do is provide the environment for them to be able to do the things that they want to do and to continue this work and and make it systematic and perhaps have an opportunity to figure out how we make it much more equitable for all of our students as they go through our system.
So we'll keep looking for time and money.
Could you put together an estimate of how much you need?
No pressure.
One billion dollars.
Well, you know, even just refreshing class sets. So when you asked, how often can we purchase another 300 books for one class level, et cetera? I think it is an ongoing conversation and hard to pinpoint exactly. We've actually worked with, when we had the ERWC grant money, we worked with our librarian and even through Copperfields, our local bookseller, to to get a good pricing on the book. So we've, you know, we've also tried to do our best to make our funds go as as far as they can. But that's a good question. We might.
In the, in the development world, this is what we call something that has high, what do they call it? Value proposition.
Yeah.
But you have to know how much you're asking for, because someone will point it out.
We could get that together for you. Yeah, thank you.
Also, when you order novels, do you get perma-bound? Because then they last a lot longer than paperback.
We try to.
They're a little bit more expensive, but they last.
Any other questions? Anything from anybody?
Nope. Thank you all. Thank you.
And next up, we have an educational technology update.
Good evening. Is it a little surreal to be up on this side of the meeting after sitting back there, like observing these meetings? So my name is Dave Fashara. I'm the director of learning and innovation technology here in Pedaluma City Schools. And thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to share some of what we've been up to. I'll take that feedback in a moment after I introduce. So just a quick overview of of our team. We like to think of ourselves as small but mighty. As you can see, we've got four tech support specialists that provide the end-user support for all the teachers and staff and students. I have two supervisors who really manage the infrastructure, and one of them more of the connectivity servers and the other, all the integration and student information systems and bringing all the curriculum to the students electronically. And then this year, new in our team is a .6 educational technology teacher on special assignment. We're going to hear more about that soon. And then one director, myself. Wanted to frame the conversation a little bit by reviewing just the the sheer volume of the hardware and software that we're we're supporting and working with here. So as you can see, there's, there's thousands of devices and many network appliances and servers, and then plethora of of apps, whether it be for learning, the pedagogy-oriented things, productivity, like the Google Workspace, and then admin apps, things like Escape or the management apps that we use to manage various pieces of of the the infrastructure. And tonight, we want to focus on a goal that we've had this year, which is, you know, going beyond the, you know, the the management and the the support and really looking at the the why and the how we're using technology to change the learning environment and provide opportunities for collaboration and creativity and creativity. to change the learning environment and provide opportunities for collaboration and creativity and critical thinking and, you know, engagement. And so that was a part of that focus was the ability to bring on an educational technology TOSA, albeit at 60%. But we've been so excited to have that as a part of our department and really have seen the impact that it's had on the learning environment and on the district. And so I'm really excited to, I'm to re, I'm supposed to say introduce, but I don't think you need me to introduce to you Laura Bradley, but I I'm excited to introduce her tonight to share some of the work that she's been doing this year around educational technology on behalf of PCS and our group.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you. Well, if you have to speak to the board, it's really nice when so many faces are familiar. And I honestly think I've hit the gold standard because I am looking at a former colleague in the English department on the east side. I'm looking at a former Kennelworth colleague. I'm looking at a parent of two former students and drum roll, please, I'm looking at a former student on the board. So it's pretty exciting to be here. So I taught middle school for 30 years. I was an English teacher primarily. That's what I always thought that I would teach. And then a master's in ed tech completely changed my classroom, the way that I taught, and that was before we had devices. And so that was, you know, by hook or by crook, I was going to get my kids onto laptops. So PEF, Significant Funding from PEF, radically changed the way that I taught and the way that my students learned. And then amazing admin at Kennelworth that sort of tapped me and said, hey, how about KTV? Why don't you take that over with Isaac Riot? And hey, why don't you create a class around technology? And so it really took me 30 years and the master's degree before I could feel like I could take on a position like ed tech TOSA. Because if you think that you can support K through 12, all the teachers, all the students at only 60%, then you have to feel like you've got some experience doing that. So lots of things that I did pursuing these certifications, like I can never know enough about how to do this right. So it took me a while to get to this place, but I could not be happier than to be where I am. Very exciting to be able to do this work for the whole district, not just for my students. So way, way back when we first brought in the iPads, I was on the the tech committee, which is now the Learning and Innovation Committee, because I wanted us to use the devices for what I thought were the best reasons. So I wanted us to use them for publishing student work, for collaborating, for learning more than one way to communicate. I was an English teacher. It was always writing, writing, writing. Am I right, Caitlin? But we are communicating now through images and through video and through all sorts of multimedia, and our kids need to know how to do that. So I've been involved on that committee for quite a few years and I'm excited to, I think this was the one that we read aloud at our last meeting. And I said, I'm really glad you had us read that aloud because that really hits me where I believe in, and I don't remember that. And Dave said, you don't remember writing it? No, I don't remember, but that's where I am. So Dave and I met a lot in August and September to figure out what this role would be. And my summary is that I'm supporting teachers and students to improve their learning and also the way that they demonstrate their learning. Because I think technology, there's a lot of ways to do that. Three main areas, providing professional development for teachers and and one to one coaching as well. Finding resources, finding ways to share them with teachers, and then also expanding opportunities on different school sites for our students and teachers. So just some examples of how I have been doing that this year. At the very beginning of the school year, I did a UDL session at our district PD day. I presented three sessions at the Q Conference in Palm Springs. A group of us went to that. And then this is the first time I'm very excited to be presenting at the ISTI Conference. That is an international technology and education conference. The first time I went to ISTI, the person next to me had a distinct accent and I said, oh, where are you from? And he said, Australia. And I said, you came to San Diego for the ISTI Conference? And he said, I come every year to the ISTI Conference. So that that, I'm very excited to be presenting in Philadelphia in June. So some examples of, so teachers reach out to me if they would like my help. We've tried to set up a system so that they can do that. So these are just some examples of things that I have done this year, working at McNear in Miss Prahlia's class. What a thrill after teaching middle school for so long to work with these little kids so that they are, they did research first. You can see the writing first, right? They need to know how to write, but then they can present what they've learned through keynote presentations, through iMovie. There are other ways for them to share their learning. So that was great fun. I'm learning a lot about teaching little kids, though, because that's that's not my wheelhouse. Hour of Code takes place in December. I put out a notice to all the teachers saying I'd be happy to come help your kids with Hour of Code. And so, Anne Belov, oh, I forgot to mention my education. I am not only a Pedaluma High grad, but Pedaluma Junior High grad and a Grant Elementary School grad. And Anne Belov, who teaches at Valley Vista, was in my class at Pedaluma High School. And so when she reached out and said, would you help me with Hour of Code? I said, of course. So we did a little scratch coding in her class. This is what I was really hoping to do more of is secondary level and helping the teachers in content area classes, like in a history class. Here are some ways your kids can demonstrate what they have learned. So I was thrilled when Senor Lev, yes, reached out and said, my students do animations as one of their projects. Would you come and help us with different ways that they could do animations? Loads of fun. I was in his class for a couple of weeks, brought popcorn on the last day so we could all watch their animations. And I think it's really important to notice, the animation on the left was hand drawn. So as a tech advocate, I'm not saying get rid of the pens and pencils, get rid of the hands on. I'm a huge advocate of hands on, but with technology, they could take their hands, hand drawn drawings, and turn them into animations that could then be played in front of the class. So I, in fact, my English class, right up until I moved out of that classroom, I was still going to Target and getting spiral notebooks for all of my students because the handwriting, the journaling was all really valuable. So I'm not one to say all tech all the time. Recently went over to McNear. They've got some parents and staff excited about a 3D printer. And so I talked to them about using Tinkercad to do 3D modeling. And then I came back to work with one of the teachers, her students design, oh, I can't remember what it's called. It's a, it's, who are the people that stand on the roadway to protect the, is it Newt's that cross the roadway? Is that what it is? And so she said, oh, our kids could design them in Tinkercad and actually 3D print their models for the crossings. So that was fun. So curating and sharing resources, that's actually one of my favorite things to do because they're everywhere. There's no reason to say, I don't know how to teach this. You can find it if you if you know how to search. So at the beginning of the year, I shared a resource hub, which is accessible on the Pedaluma City Schools website. And it has multiple folders of resources broken down by category. Maybe you're a math teacher, maybe you're a science teacher, or maybe you want to do podcasting. So there's a folder just for podcasting. So those resources are there at all times, along with a link to a contact form if they want to reach out for help. And then recently, Dave said, how about once a week, an article for TED Tech Talks? I said, okay, English teacher, I can do this. So on Tuesdays, I try to put out a little tech talk just on, might be a classroom practice, it might be a useful app, it might be ChatGPT, hello. So those are ways that I'm trying to communicate with staff. Expanding opportunities. So finding ways, one of the things we talked about early in the year was more steam at the elementary schools and asking an elementary school teacher to add steam to their day is just, it's just a huge burden. So we wanted to try to lighten that burden a bit. We worked on creating after school coding clubs to introduce coding to elementary school kids, but also to get high school students to run those clubs. Because there's only one of me and there's too many schools and I can't do that. So that has been, for me, the big admin piece that as a teacher I had never done. So coordinating with all these high school students and their teachers and coordinating with the elementary schools. And we just have been thrilled with the turnout, particularly from the high school students. We started piloting at four schools, Pen Grove, McDowell, Valley Vista, and Cherry Valley. And you can see our lovely volunteers up there for those first four. They did a six week coding club after school. We had teachers at each site who opened their room, stayed in the room so that the high school kids wouldn't be alone with the children. That can be frightening. We all know that. And we had about 70 students in those, that first six week run. That was January, February that we did that. And then we came back after spring break and managed to get them at all seven elementary schools. And so some, some of the original leaders said they were too busy and they couldn't do the second round. Some of them switched schools and then we told them, please tell your friends and bring them on board. So we got some more volunteers to come for the second round. And they're right in the middle of that right now. This is the third week of this six week. So we were just talking about how we're going to do this next year. We've learned a lot about how to organize it and train the high school kids. And so that's a grand experiment. Excited to get those kids involved that way. Also, we have been working with Lego and Valley Vista to bring a, I like to call the Lego Lab. I don't know if that's what it's going to be called. So you can see that one of the Lego representatives came to a staff meeting and the Legos came out and the teachers got involved. And they have these bins that within the bins are like 20 different lessons, I think, in each bin. So there's quite a bit of, it's not just play. There's quite a bit of academic work that goes into that. So very excited to see that happen soon at Valley Vista. Yeah. And then, so this was me in the office with the little Ozobot, learning how to program the little robot. So one of our plans is to, do you know how that works? It's programmed by color. So the pen is colored on the paper and so it's telling the robot what to do when it runs over the the colors. So one of our plans is, now, some of the schools have some of these kits. Some of them are in use. Some of them are tucked away, getting dusty and covered. And so one of our plans is that we would have a kit with lesson plans and me. And so the teachers can sign out all of it, or maybe they just want the kit. If they want me to come, I can come also. And so by having it centrally located, we can try to get it out to all of the elementary schools. And same with the VR goggles, which we were experimenting with in the office. We were going on an African safari and you know how they do that? They stick a camera and then they leave. And then you're on the safari and suddenly a giraffe is straddling the camera and a critter comes right up to your face. So look at the hands of the little girls there, right? It's it's pretty intense. It's pretty intense. So we're looking right now for a VR set that includes lesson plans, because most of them don't. But again, we want to provide a centrally located kit that we can bring out to the schools for field trips. And then we wanted to provide support this year for the SCO projects, like the STEAM showcase, the Film Festival, the Robotics Challenge. And I didn't do very much around that, but that is one of our goals. And we just talked today about creating some very specific, not just links, but very specific steps to support teachers in doing those things because they're they're big. It's a lot to teach and then to also prepare your students to do those kinds of projects. So that is what we're looking at next year, in addition to what we've already been doing at 60%. So someone just pointed out recently that Clippy was like early ChatGPT. That was like early AI. Do you want me to help you write your letter? Because I can figure out what you need. Yeah. So there you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And an acknowledgement to Amy for figuring out the feedback.
Now I can leave after the presentation. Thank you, Amy.
Actually, I was going to say, I'm sure you were all waiting for me to go back there and deal with the feedback, right? But I did not, because I wanted to make it clear that that's not my job. I am the pedagogy curriculum person. I am not the IT, right?
Laura, just wanted to tell you, your reach has gone beyond Pedaluma City Schools. I've shared your tech talks with my colleagues at San Francisco State and we've adopted some of the things that you talk about. Yeah.
I also graduated from San Francisco State.
She's everywhere.
Everywhere. That's wonderful to hear.
And my kid loved working with you.
Thank you. Loved having your kids in class and Caitlin and Joanna's kids. It's like home.
Awesome. Thank you. And our last presentation for now is the peace poll presentation.
Mine is really, really quick. Less than three slides. So we have the opportunity to work with a group of veterans. They have, they're placing peace polls around the county on school sites. It met, it meets our goals of being inclusive and welcoming. And can you advance it to the next slide? Written in eight, up to eight different languages is May Peace Prevail on Earth. It's the last thing I did before I left my elementary school where I was principal. And we had it in American Sign, we had it in Vietnamese, we had it in a number of languages. Some people place a buddy bench there. There's different ways of celebrating and bringing community on campus, if you advance to the next slide. So there, it's there in front of the multipurpose room. There's funding available for it. The Rotary Clubs will pay for it. We would just have to place it into the ground. There's a group of retired veterans who are willing to help and meet with principals and figure it out with them. So it's a pretty simple process. It's optional. It's not required. But we just wanted you to know that this was something that we're in conversation with, the local Rotary Clubs, and being able to place these polls on our campuses. So we just wanted to give you that information. Thank you.
Did we not, did we want, don't we have a peace poll in one of the campuses?
Do they? Oh, so it's already been done? Did you know that? When did that happen? Was it the same group?
No, it was our parents, but it looked, it's everything you just shared.
Okay. So anyway, this will, the the funding is provided for this for the school sites. And Chris and the maintenance team is willing to help them put them in. So, thank you.
And I think, I think too, just to add, they they'll typically come out and help do a, you want to commemorate the, you know, bring it out to the public. And so we'll we'll find a way to to celebrate these at each school site. And we were, I was talking with Sheldon about, towards the beginning of, you know, especially it was towards the beginning of the year and really link it to peace, nonviolence at our school sites, that this is a kind of, this is a safe place, linked to all those things. So, school climate, yeah. It's nonpolitical, nonreligious. It's just peace.
Awesome. Thank you. Now we're going to take another two minute recess. So we'll reconvene in two minutes. Before PM. So now we are moving on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. If you have a public comment and you're in person, please fill out a yellow card and bring it up to Maite. And if you are watching on Zoom, you can put your name in the chat and please also put the subject matter you would like to talk about. Again, this is comments on non-agendized items. And while we wait for comments, I will read our language for public comment. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four minute per person limit or a twenty minute limit per subject matter. And I don't see any yellow slips. I don't see any commenters on Zoom. So I think. I will wait ten more seconds and then I'm going to move on. Speak now or keep it to the agenda. All right. So we're going to move on to adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
I second. All in favor? Great. And now I will report on activities and correspondence of our wonderful school board members. We did, we went to the budget advisory committee, the safety committee, the Mahoney family community achievement award ceremony, Valley Vista Children's Day celebration. And Latinx dinner night, Pedaluma High School government class, PEF scholarship night, Cherry Valley Art Day, continuous improvement committee, planning session, butter and egg day parade. PCS art show, the LCAP committee, Pedaluma Junior High open house, Pedaluma Climate Roundtable hosted by Cool Pedaluma. Daily acts and the Pedaluma Climate Action Committee, Arts and Music Committee, Sonoma Mountain High Port, uh, High Portfolio Night Tour of Pedaluma High Shops with the Rotary Club. West Side Band Festival, Healthy Choices Committee Meeting, Casa Grande Track Meets. And our wonderful student board members went to the Butter and Eggs Day Parade with Pedaluma Wildlife Museum. Did Pedaluma Wildlife Museum in-class tours, a field trip to schoolhouse beach tide pools with the marine science class. And the Pedaluma High School Recycle and Environmental Club meetings. So busy couple of weeks. And now back to public comment, comments from the public on consent items. So. Again, if you're interested this time in commenting on an item on our consent agenda, please put your name in the chat and talk. Tell us which item you would like to talk about. If you're in person, please fill out one of the beautiful yellow slips and I really hope they're yellow if I keep saying this. They usually are. Okay. Okay. Nailing it. So I'll give folks a little bit of time here. Seeing none. Um, I'm going to move on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Uh, any questions or comments before I call the vote? Great.
Yes.
I knew there was something. Sorry. Go for it.
The. So I was just on. To. Well, I had just had a comment on to thirteen, the approval of the book creator premium license for K through twelve. I love it. I think that's wonderful that it's going to be district wide available. I would, I had a question about number two point nine, that it was the Pedaluma High School locker rooms that they're getting. You know, we've remodeled and necessary from what it sounded like. I was just wondering where the Casa locker rooms are. If, if that's just kind of being thought about right now, if it's, you know, just where its status is.
So for the Pedaluma High School two point nine, it's simply the mechanical unit. So we're not renovating the locker rooms. They were already renovated. But the mechanical units on top actually have failed. They're no longer functioning. So they literally have not worked for a few months now. So those are being replaced. But that's what this item is about. Another item will be coming forward. At the next board meeting to also redo the roofing coating at the same time will be two separate contractors. So just to clarify that. As far as the Casa Grande locker rooms, we're currently working with the committee at Casa Grande to prioritize all of their areas. We actually did a walkthrough, Matthew Harris and I, a week or two ago, I, I don't recall exactly when. And I had not been in the Casa locker rooms in probably about forty years. I, I didn't recall that they were that color. Orange and yellows and, and some sheet metal. Plates that had been manufactured by maintenance to function as doors. So clearly in need of some renovations at Casa Grande. So both the gymnasium and the locker rooms are in, in need and they're certainly on the list to be considered. I can tell you that one item that they had brought up as a need that we could address short term, I'm already looking at, and that is. In the boys locker room, there's kind of this space that they use for tension, you know, so they can do stretching and other things. And then the girls locker room, there's a wall that separates the locker rooms, the lockers from this area. Excuse me. So we're already going to be looking at building that wall this summer and putting that in so that they have that. Maybe painting in a little bit and freshing it up a bit, but it needs an overhaul for sure. So that, that will be in the works.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right. I call it to a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Wonderful. Now we'll move back to public comment. Now it's public comment on action items. So this is anything under item fourteen, action items. Again, put your name and what you'd like to talk about in the chat, please. If you're watching on Zoom and wish to make public comment. Or fill out a yellow sheet if you're here in person. Well, wait a little bit and see if anyone wants to make a comment. But seeing none and seeing as it's eight thirty-two, I'm going to move on to item fourteen, action items. And so first up is board meeting planning per AB three sixty-one.
Yeah. I'm gonna move to stay in the hybrid mode for our next meeting.
Second, second. Great. Any discussion? Cool. All in favor? Wonderful. Item two, approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three classified management salary schedule, certificated management salary schedule, confidential employee. Employee salary schedule and contract addendums for the assistant superintendents, all of them and the chief business official and the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the salary schedules.
I second.
Are there any comments or questions?
I'm happy that we can afford to do this. I'm grateful. I'm grateful for the work.
All right. All in favor? Next up is approval of a resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash twenty-five of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts. Declaring May as Asian American and Pacificer, Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Trustee Jen, would you like to read this one?
Sure. Whereas the United States designates May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the contributions. Of generations of AAPI people to this country's history, society and culture. And whereas the month of May was selected for AAPI Heritage Month because the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States in May of eighteen forty-three. And the first transcontinental railroad was completed on May eighteen sixty-nine with substantial contributions from Chinese immigrants. And whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander community is inherently a diverse population composed of more than forty-five distinct ethnicities. And more than a hundred language dialects. And whereas according to the US Census Bureau, California is home to over six point four million AAPI people, making up over sixteen percent of the state's population. And whereas despite hardships and barriers, the people of Asia and the Pacific Islands who have come to this country. And their descendants make substantial contributions to California's development and weave distinct threads into the state's social fabric. And whereas according to the latest California Department of Education data, at least three point six percent of students in Pedaluma City Schools. Three point eight percent of its classified staff and two point seven percent of its certificated staff identify as AAPI. And they all contribute to the cultural mosaic that is a strength of this school district and the community. And whereas core values and the governance of Pedaluma City Schools include the belief that all students reach high levels of achievement. Through rigorous and culturally relevant curriculum and diversity is an asset that strengthens and enriches our learning community. And whereas all students need opportunities to understand the common humanity underlying all people while learning their own cultural identity and heritage. And to understand and respect the cultural identities and heritage of others. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School District. Board of Education hereby recognize May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And encourage all Pedaluma families, students and staff to investigate and celebrate the contributions of AAPI people. To the community of Pedaluma, the state of California and the United States.
Awesome. Wonderful.
Beautiful. I would, and Sheldon, you, you authored this.
Kylie and I co-authored this.
It's beautiful. Like some of the language you have, like I'm gonna copy and paste this. It's beautiful. Yeah. It's really, really well done.
Do I hear a motion? I move to approve resolution two, two, three dash two, five.
Any further discussion on this wonderful resolution? Great. All in favor?
Hi.
Wonderful. And now we'll move on to another resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash twenty-six. On final action on resolution and decision not to reemploy certificated employee for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
Do we have any discussion or any information we need on?
I just need a clarification. I was kind of confused why it identified twenty-four FTE, but the named one. I just, I just wasn't clear.
I think that this is because when we did our PKS, it's really, we were listing the positions that we think we might need to let, not reemploy.
That's right. Thank you.
We had listed many and as I think we shared, we were able to place and, and not lay off many of those positions. Unfortunately, at this point, we have one position that we still have not had a place for. I'm working with. Our schools and with this unit member to try and find a placement, but until that happens, then we need to do, do this final layup notice. Yeah.
Yes, the preliminary March fifteenth versus the final.
That's right. Thanks for that clarification.
There's only one and I am working with, in communication and working with this unit member, we're going to try and, and. Keep, keep him on if we're able to. So we're working to try and make that happen. And, you know, he's got to also meet his own family's needs. So. We're in kind of that weird part of the year, but we're hopeful that we're able to keep, to keep him on.
Any other comments or questions? Great. I call this resolution to a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Great. And now we're moving on to business services, a purchase approval. For fifteen hundred Lenovo Chromebooks. Can I have a motion? I second. Sorry. Great. Can we have some information or does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Are these like for certain schools, junior high, high school?
Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll have Dave come up and share it's, it's for our secondary and it represents about a third of our overall secondary students. So I'll let Dave share kind of the plan, but then I do want to talk to you about the fiscal kind of piece of this.
Yeah. So the, the current fleet that we have out right now for Chromebooks. The, the majority of them were deployed in twenty nineteen. So this is the end of the fourth year of that fleet. And so we are. Proposing to refresh this fleet, not all at one time, but in phases. The devices have a four to five year lifespan. So by refreshing one half of the original fleet this year, and then those actually get. Deployed to grade seven and eight. The seventh graders coming in are getting Chromebooks for the first time. So they get a new device. And then the eighth graders who are using hand-me-down devices will get a new device that then they'll take with them for the next four or five years. And then the following year, we get fifteen hundred more to replace the devices that are in their fifth year. And then those get deployed out to the students who have the oldest devices. And then the year after that, fifteen hundred more would take care of the remaining devices that were purchased for the junior highs. In twenty twenty-one. So they were, they were purchased over a three-year time span. And we've been in an ongoing effort to break out our technology purchases so that they're not all happening at one time. Thanks to the bond issue that we had about, you know, eight years ago, we were able to purchase. All the devices and infrastructure at once, but then refreshing it all at once becomes really challenging. So we've been able to parse them out so that it's more of an annual. Refresh cycle.
And we used COVID dollars early on to be able, because we were in such a distance learning. So that we were able to do that. So, but we didn't do everything. Dave was very strategic in how he kind of laid out that plan and how we did that.
I should, speaking of COVID dollars, we, how about the emergency connectivity funds that, that provided the funding for all of the elementary device refreshes and our, our. Certified MacBook refresh. There was another round of that that we were eligible to apply for and which we have applied for. We have not received decision on that yet. It's possible that this purchase will be fully reimbursed.
We're hopeful. In the meantime, however, we have to buy them upfront. And so. We are tapping into some of the buildup of insurance money that we've collected over the past couple of years. And a larger chunk is actually coming out of, if you'll recall about four years ago, we had that one million dollars in one time. And the board had directed, I think it was in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, to set that money aside for the refresh. Port, portion of it was elementary, a portion of it was like four hundred, six hundred roughly. And so we are tapping into that, that chunk of money too. And so our, our expectation would be that. If this other money comes through, then we would replenish that money that we're using initially to then. Help offset the cost or to purchase these initial Chromebooks because we have to get the purchases going. We don't want to wait till the summer. Or we won't have enough time to make sure we get them in on time and are able to set them up and get them deployed. I would say, you know, longer term, however, you know, we probably need to start considering building in. Some level of annual contribution into that, that fund that we set aside, that resource. So that we can, you know, continue to refresh the stock of one-to-one devices, both elementary and secondary. Over the long haul. So that may be something we want to come back in next several weeks with kind of what does that plan look like in the long term? We've been really fortunate that we've been able to figure stuff out, whether it's COVID money. Or whether it's a reimbursement plan like the connectivity month, you know what I mean? So we've made it work and we've been fortunate to do that.
So, so right now, five hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars for this, this essentially, if you're, we're just talking about secondary. One third. Re, of a refresh. So we're talking, we need to do this two more times. And then it's going to start to, we're going to start to get into a cycle. And so.
Well, two more times for the secondary and then the elementary.
Right.
So it's, it's really like a five hundred fifty to six hundred thousand dollar investment every, every year. Yeah. You know, because we have, yeah, if you think about it, we're, and Dave and I talked about this earlier on, if we could come up with like a twenty percent. If there, if the lifespan is roughly five years, then you twenty percent. It's not exact science, but.
Can I ask you about the, the Chromebooks that we purchased back in, I guess, November? And they were the Chromebooks for the casp. And I was just wondering, I, I think I had. A hundred, no, yeah, I think a hundred and fifty Chromebooks that we bought for the casp. And I was just wondering where those are housed. Are they, are they added into this? I, I, I don't know whether they were given to students.
And so we, are you talking about the ones we used for, for kennel work?
I don't know.
So.
I don't remember.
When a part of our current program is a bring your own device option. And students who bring their own devices need to borrow Chromebooks from us in order to take the casp. So, and that combined with breakage rates, each year we find ourselves in this catch-up mode to have enough devices for the students who bring their own devices. As we refresh in these next phases, we are going to purchase one device per student because they are, that's what is needed. And we'll also have some surplus of these slightly newer devices that can be used as a backstop for casp. So we'll be in a, a better position.
So are these housed here? Or are they housed at the, the, the Chromebooks that were used?
The hundred and fifty?
The hundred and fifty for gas.
No, they go into circulation for students to use.
They replaced. Bring their own device. They didn't have a device.
Yeah.
So we're basically getting rid of the bring your own. So we're basically getting rid of the bring your own device concept. But, but there are other, like we did buy, using Title One funds for Kennelworth, we set up, I forget whether it was a computer lab.
Yeah, those are IMAX for the, the design lab and KTV.
So there are certain time, like that's Title One funding, those, those devices, IMAX in that case, can only be used at Kennelworth. They can never be redeployed anywhere, because that's the Title One rule. So sometimes when we're looking at federal funding, we have to be mindful of that as well, that you, you know what I mean? Those are conversations that we kind of have from an inventory perspective. Fortunately, the COVID funds weren't restricted like that with, like Title One funds are. So I just, as a reminder, we're constantly also evaluating how was a device purchased and for what purpose.
So I think, I think just moving forward, we, we also have to be thinking about how are we getting some direction around setting aside some money so that each year when we're purchasing these?
We've been fortunate in the past handful of years with the, the COVID relief funds and, and then the continuation of these COVID relief funds essentially in the emergency connectivity fund. So the refreshes that we expected to hit us have not actually affected our, our, our normal funds yet. And, but eventually they will. So we want to be planning for the future so that we don't, we're not scrambling in three years potentially when we, we, we finally do have to fund a refresh from our own.
Possibly we can bring a recommendation for.
But it's another, it's another possible use of the art, music, instructional materials discretionary block grant as well. I mean, that block grant is open-ended enough that that also could be another possibility. And that's why we took that one-time money, roughly a million dollars four years ago and set it aside. So those are other opportunities for the board to look at and say, okay, we have this one-time money. I'm not saying set it all aside. But the board may decide we want to set a portion as these grants come forward that are more discretionary, you maybe set a piece of it aside to minimize the impact on the general fund. It's just, it's just, those are the types of things you guys can consider.
Did the, didn't, did this district go to one-to-one as a result of our parcel tax? Or at the time of the parcel?
No, it, it went to one-to-one at the time of the bond. So when the bond passed in November of fourteen, they actually wrote into the bond furniture and one-to-one devices and connectivity backbone, if you will. I'm sure I'm saying that wrong, but. And so that was in the first round, two thousand fifteen then. And I'm sure Sandra and some of my colleagues in the audience would be happy to share their experience. But in two thousand fifteen, because I heard about it a lot my first year or two. In two thousand fifteen, then the district went out and bought a lot of furniture and a lot of one-to-one devices and just kind of rolled it out. But it was related to the bond, not the parcel tax. It would, it could be, and I would, I would argue, a more appropriate parcel tax type of expenditure than a bond, which is more typically a bricks and mortar. Exactly. Because we actually had to restructure the sale of bonds to repay them faster because the life, the lifespan of that equipment was very short, unlike a building or a renovation. So, so.
Yeah.
It came out of the bond, but
Yeah.
it, it would be more suited to a parcel tax to create that type of revenue stream. Yes.
Okay.
Great. I think we are good. So I will call the purchase approval to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. So moving on to ed services, but also on the same, in the same vein, a purchase approval for thirty-three IMAX for career tech ed pathway, computer design at CASA. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase approval for the IMAX.
My second.
Great. Any discussion, any questions on this one? I think we're tacked out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we're on to the MOU between Petaluma City Schools and Sonoma State University about guaranteed admissions.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Petaluma City Schools and Sonoma State.
Oh, I second.
Great. Now we can discuss because it's on the table.
I have a question about, about the application fee. I thought it was going to be waived, but it looks like there is still a fee, section F.
Yeah, we discussed that with SSU. The application fee is just part of the CSU's process. The conversation really is working with them to find ways that we can eliminate that at some point. And a lot of students who, who who qualify under certain conditions will get waivers for this, but it's a fee that all CSUs use for the application, not just SSU, but moving forward, the conversation with them is working, as we begin to strengthen that partnership and, and finding ways to help support this process, how we can find ways for students to at least eliminate that cost for those that are in the guaranteed admissions to SSU.
Think of the cost and the barrier. That was my big, my big concern as well, is that it's, it's a, it's a barrier, the way, the way that, and I'm sad that Elias Lopez, who was here, he was waiting, and we should have moved it up for it earlier, but the way he described it is that it's, it's a Cal-State sort of a, it's how they get their, the, the applicants. And so we would want to work on finding a way around that so that our students don't have to do any sort of like, but we need, we need a special Petaluma City Schools pathway, essentially. Is that how you understood it, Tony?
Yes.
So how much is it these days?
It's seventy dollars.
Yeah.
It's, and per student, it's seventy dollars per college they apply to.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And they would still, I mean, as I read the MOU, they would, our students would still have to apply the ones who are A through G and qualified would still have to apply.
Yeah, so, well, they, they, they all have to submit the, the CONAPs piece, which is that, that piece that they submit for the CSUs. As we build, there are certain mechanisms and systems that we will need to work with them to, to streamline something that's direct, that, that they can get all that information that they would typically get to the CONAPs.
Yeah.
That, that they would get directly so that we can bypass that process. But as of now, there's not that mechanism in place yet.
No, I can tell you that, I mean, the undergrad admissions is centralized in Long Beach and it's a bureaucracy that I, I, I don't have a whole lot of hope that you're gonna be able to get around. But, you know, on the plus side, what I really appreciate about this MOU, you, you know, it's, I mean, Sonoma State already has a geographic preference for our students.
Right.
But really, the value is, you know, I think they can really help us create the college-going culture, particularly for students who wouldn't otherwise think about college in their future.
Yes.
You know, at the junior high level, you know, going on visits, like you were talking about, the Sonoma State, it's right there. And, you know, it's a lovely campus and it could be really inspiring.
Yep. And for me, I mean, just promoting that college-going culture, being able to, to share with our eighth graders or our seventh grader, ninth graders, eighth grader, seventh graders to say, here's a roadmap. Do the X, Y, Z, maintain this GPA. Here are the courses that you need to take. And you have automatic, you're automatically gonna have admission into, into Sonoma State. So that it's demystifying the process a little bit, particularly for the junior high school mind. Okay, this is what, this is what it's gonna take. And then I have automatically, I'm gonna be accepted into that school.
And I think one, one piece that Dr. Lopez shared with us when we met with him was there may come a point when SSU is full and they cannot accept any more kids. But because of this guarantee, they will accept our kids before they accept anyone else. So it will provide, yeah, our students a guaranteed admission when, when they're timed, when they are fully enrolled, our kids will get the preference.
Great. Any other questions or discussion? I call this MOU to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Amazing. Passes unanimously. We're on a unanimous streak tonight. Let's see, let's see if we can keep it up. Okay, moving on to student services. We have a contract approval with North Bay Security. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the contract approval with North Bay Security.
My second.
Great. My Ted, you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Sure. Bill, she's here, the owner of the company, and we're tired of meeting.
That's dedication right there. So we, one of the goals that came out of the safety committee and a very clear ask from staff is that there's consistency with training, and this is a way to provide that for our staff. So Bill and I will work on looking at reviewing safety plans and train and actually changing the template that we're using to one that's a little more robust. And we're gonna walk some of the campuses to take a look at them, where cameras might need to be placed, whatever kinds of other enhancements we might need to do. And then in the fall, he'll provide training to school sites on incident command and intruder practice, also some training on drills, and then he'll watch some of the drills and see and provide feedback to our staffs, and that'll happen at all the school sites. And he will be coordinating that effort with the principals. So he works with schools in Nevada, he comes highly recommended, and we're really fortunate and grateful to have his support in this work.
And Bill, we'd love, I mean, if you're, if you're willing, we'd love to invite you up. He was very highly, highly recommended and a very patient man. But just in case, just in case there are any questions, but I think, you know, it's without, without a doubt that one of the things we keep hearing over and over is that we need to practice, we need to keep, keep practicing. And then also, none of us here are school safety experts. And to have someone with that expertise and that background who's, this is what he does, is a, it's, it's a relief, you know, takes some things. It also helps me sleep at night to say, we're, we're doing everything we can to make sure that our schools are safe as possible for our students and that we've practiced everything that we need as much as we possibly can. You know, God forbid there is ever anything dangerous happening to one of our students. So with that, Bill, please, you know, just a quick introduction and then.
So I'll give you a quick two-minute overview of myself. I grew up in Nevada. My father was a school administrator in Nevada. He's the principal of junior high, my junior high. So that'll explain a lot of my issues. But I, like I said, I grew up in Marin, fourth, fourth generation, basically. But I worked, I was a police officer for twenty-five years. I retired after my third neck surgery. I didn't play anymore. So Jan Derby asked me to come work in Nevada, because they were getting rid of school resource officers. And because I had taught there and I was a K-9 officer and a mother officer, I had a lot of, and a detective, I had a lot of experience in the schools. And then growing up with watching my father and actually my sister as a teacher as well. So thirteen years ago, I started working in Nevada. And then about eight years ago, San Rafael School District reached out to me. I currently work with Ross Valley School District, a bunch of different school districts, doing different things. But the common message that I want to bring is we need to use the same language.
Gonna really be loud. We need to use the same language. What is a shelter in place? What is a lockdown? And the police department, when they call you and they say, go on a lockdown, the question you need to ask is why? Because what it does to staff and students on a lockdown compared to just a shelter in place is a huge difference. So that's, my goal is to, I understand the mindset of schools. I also understand the mindset of law enforcement and to bring that together and have a consistency through all the schools. So everybody's using the same language is really important. So I'm very excited, if you all say yes, to be working with you. And this isn't just a one-time thing. You need to do this a lot. So you get that consistency and the comfortable, teachers are not first responders and we're gonna ask them to be that. So there's a huge understanding, a buy-in from them, excuse me, from them too. So enough of your time. I know you're running late. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I don't have any questions for you, but just for Matthew and Amy and everybody, I think this is a really important thing to get out to families, to students, to staff.
Absolutely.
Really publicize this partnership because it's invaluable. And I mean, that dollar amount to make us feel and be safer is a steal.
When, once it's approved, we'll get the message.
Well, then, who am I to hold us up? I call the contract approval to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. It passes unanimously. We're doing it, y'all. And so now we are moving on to comments from the public on discussion and information items only. So if you're still with us, you can bring a yellow card on up to make a comment on one of the four discussion items, or you can put your name and which item you would like to publicly comment on, in the chat. And we'll leave it open for a little bit. All right. Seeing no public comments, we'll move on to sixteen point one point one, an amended board bylaw. Can I, oh, we don't, we don't need motions. So Matthew, take it away.
Okay, so worked on a board compensation study, and I know that, you know, board members do. I just, I mean, if, if we could just re, if I could read back the, the board, what the board did this, just this last few weeks. You all spend an enormous amount of time driving to and from school events, participating. And I know that you're all elected officials and, you know, quote-unquote volunteers. I looked to see what other school districts were, how they were compensating their, their school board members. And we're kind of near the bottom, about thirty-three dollars a month, whereas the, the top was four eighty-two. Santa Rosa is four, four hundred eighty-two dollars a month. Windsor is two forty, Nevada two hundred, and then down, down, down. We're, we're at thirty-three dollars a month. And so in my recommendation, recognition of board member time and service the community, recommending changing this board bylaw to the board, the board members are, are received two hundred fifty dollars per month. So it kind of puts you in the middle, at least upper middle of the pack for our local surrounding school districts. And to do that, we need to update board bylaw nine, two, five, zero. This is a first read, so I just wanted to put it out there and allow you all to discuss. And then we, we would bring it back for a second read at the next board meeting if, if it's agreeable to you.
Does anyone have any comments or questions or discussion?
I mean, I know none of us do it for the money, but as we look at, you know, we're not gonna be on the board forever, attracting newborn members.
That's it. Yes.
When our, when it's time for the next elections. You know, just because we saw so many open seats even after the November elections, and we just don't want to be in that situation. So I don't know if that will help.
It's a small token, a small acknowledgement.
Yeah.
It's gas money.
Yes. I'm, I want to propose a different process. I feel very uncomfortable about voting for this at some point. And, and I also feel very uncomfortable that our superintendent brings this to us. I mean, I appreciate it, but I think if we vote on something that, this, that the superintendent brings to us, a conflict of interest is inherent in it. And so I, I was thinking about, I, I think the issue's important. None of us, you know, expect it because we ran without this benefit. So there's, so I would like to see a committee that doesn't include you give us the recommendation. And I was thinking it might be LCAP. It could be your superintendent's advisory committee. Might be both. But I'd rather have the, our community make that decision and look at the data. And, and then some other things I'd like them to consider, it's, it's up to them, is do we start it at the next election cycle instead? Because to get us out of a
Sure.
out of a conflict of interest. And then should some of that compensation be for election fees? You know, that, I think that's a big barrier to.
That's one thing that Santa Rosa City Schools does is anyone that, they'll pay the, not the filing fee, the fee to have a statement on the ballot. Santa Rosa City Schools will pay that fee. So that would be an interesting thing to incorporate.
And was there a filing fee also?
Oh, God, there's so many fees. Yeah. Not anymore. We're a bilingual county as of twenty twenty census.
That's why it's so expensive.
Anyway. So we, yeah, so we could get, we could put together a group of, put together a group of, maybe it is through LCAP, Tony. Either, either LCAP or we. Either either LCAP or we get a group, group of really community members together. We can get some teacher, staff, parents, and come up with some sort of recommendation. We can absolutely do that. I just, I think it's. Yeah, it's more of a, I know it's a token, but it's, yeah.
I appreciate it, but for, I think, process makes a huge difference here. And so LCAP would be good.
Okay.
Hello. Great. Any other comments on that one?
The only comment I have is that I I'm really glad you brought that up, Sheldon, because I was very uncomfortable.
Yes.
But I was just, it was just interesting that they lowered the amount per month. In twenty, in nineteen eighty-five, it was four hundred dollars a month or something, or at least that's how I read it.
No, a year, it's the same.
Oh, it was a year. Got it.
Maybe we should make it tied to inflation. Okay, moving on, sorry, to sixteen point three point one, this is first reading of a new course proposal, career exploration and development.
Yeah, this is a course that will start at Casa Grande, but it it essentially is open to our our entire schools that wish to to utilize it. But it's a great opportunity for for seniors in their second semester to really get some work-based learning experience and explore the career fields, opportunities to internship, to get paid internships, to work and meet with industry, as well as the soft skills needed to to kind of thrive and be successful in the in the world. And it's a great opportunity for our seniors who have that room and space to to take that opportunity and take that class for for before they decide to go into college or whatever, or career, or whatever they may decide to do after after high school. Yeah. And partly funded, some of the work-based learning is funded through CTE Foundation. So that's where some of that paid internship comes from.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
That's good.
Great. Moving on to sixteen point four, Student Services, an amended board policy, first reading of BP fifty-one forty-five point nine, hate motivated behavior. Tell us about it, Myte.
So. We, this is a revamp of the policy. The original policy didn't have an educational component in it, didn't have consequences in it. So we want it and we have, there's been an uptick, certainly, as you all know. And so we want to be able to support our staff and give them a platform and the framework to be able to work from. So this provides a little more. It's more substantive in nature and it's it's less, far less tolerant.
I appreciate the educational component in it. I think that's really essential.
We'll also have a flyer in the hand, Student Handbook that will go out. It's from Savior Six, which gives students information about what to do if they are targeted and how to. So that'll be included in the Student Handbook as well. We do need something. I do believe we also need to bring something forward for staff. So I'm going to talk to Jason about that as well. For them to have some protection as well, so.
So I just want to clarify, Myte, I know in the Safety Committee, we've been talking about, you know, does motive matter? You know, with with, or is it just impact? But as my read, I want to make sure I understand this correctly. I mean, this is really a policy about when motive is aligned with the with the speech. And and so these are higher consequences, whereas in the Safety Committee, I think we're talking more about school climate circumstances where, you know, there can be injury without motive and there are different ways of addressing that.
Right. We would try more restorative options, right? This is looking, you know, you're exactly right. It's really, if the intent is hate, then the consequences need to be far higher. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right, moving on to Administrative Regulations fifty-one forty-four and fifty-one forty-four point one.
Those are, we updated the ARs to match the policy. So this is just informing you of that, that those, they fall in line with CS. See, oh, I always get CS.
CSV, yeah, that one, yeah.
Yes. So they, so we just needed to update those to make sure that they matched our policies.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So something that's come up, I've I've been looking at other districts dealing with issues like Miller Creek. And then there was an issue up in Santa Rosa, another one. Parents concerned, I know in our district as well about like violent, I guess, what they would classify as violent behaviors or violent speech. And so this deals with like the student who has, you know, said or done something, but like what what do we have in place for students who are the victims or the subject of that? I didn't see it in here. I don't know if it's somewhere else.
Yeah, that would be a good addition. Since this is a first read, we could add, we could certainly add something like that. Yeah, that's a good point. Often with all the safety work that we've been doing, it's often the victim that is not necessarily attended to. And we need to pay more attention to that. Yeah. Well, we'll work on some language to include. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments on the administrative regulations? All right, we'll move on to future business. What do we want to see in the future?
Something that that came up a lot in office hours, especially at the middle schools, was bell schedules and the opportunity to take elective courses that some of our students don't get because they're either in ELD or in study skills. And I think it's kind of an equity issue. So I don't know. I would just like to.
Sure.
Talk about bell schedules and elective opportunities.
Is co-leading or co-facilitating a bell schedule committee right now for our secondary schools? Do you want to share a little bit about the work?
Yeah, so this year, we.
And I know this is about future business, so we're not going to be going into much detail, but I'm just, I'm just thinking that we can. We could, we could also bring it back for an update.
Yeah, I think maybe at the class with the next board meeting, give an update on where we are with the bell schedule and how that might help support elementary as well.
So is it high school and?
You gotta turn on your microphone.
High school and middle school or is it mostly just the high school?
Currently, we're just focusing on the high school.
Because the complaints I've been getting or the comments I've been getting was at the middle school level.
But you do have, you do have junior high representation.
We have, we have, yes, but I'm trying to think if we have Kenworth. I believe we have Peddleum Junior High for sure.
Okay. So we can bring back, we'll bring back and bring an update to the next meeting.
Thank you. Can part of that presentation be, I know we've talked about the potential of adding a seventh period. I don't know if that's been talked about in the committee. We just hear about it's expensive, but like, if we could hear how much that would cost. Like, what are the real costs about it? Because actually, coincidentally, I did talk with some freshmen today about that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. And we're going to be looking at some of that stuff through the committee that Tony's looking at. And it's not, the way we calculate that would not be dissimilar for the junior high as for the high school. So we can kind of play with both. And then, did you have something else? I'm sorry. Um, so speaking of diversifier narrative, I would love to hear about funding for that. And if it's one of our goals, you know, and our our goals and objectives, then why isn't there money tied to it? Like, you know, it just, I was wondering that, like, that is very important to us, but it doesn't seem like there's a funding source. So where can that money come from? Does it need to be from the LCAP? Can it come out of, I don't know, the textbook budget, textbook materials? Where does that, I don't even know who to look at that.
Well. And that was, that was a presentation today, so.
Right. Are you looking at, Tony? Who am I supposed to?
We can, we can organize.
I think we could also include some of that in the budget assumptions when we bring the budget back. I mean, we're going to be bringing some preliminary budgets and some, you got a lot of budget conversation on your horizon, I predict. So we can incorporate some of that as part of those assumptions, et cetera. Because I mean, like, three hundred bucks doesn't sound like it'd be that much money. That's all.
And plus, it's just, I mean, this is kind of.
Yeah, it's.
It's kind of a Williams Act thing in the sense that this is. And sorry, this is.
Right.
This is a core to our education mission.
Yes, that's a good point, too. And then also, and in terms of diversifier narrative, I would love to see the old ed present as well next year, even sooner, about what they're doing on in on their sites as well.
Okay.
So.
So maybe a follow, so I'm hearing a follow-up diversifier narrative about with our alt eds and the funding sources for bucks.
And if anything is happening at the elementary level, that would be cool to know, too.
Okay.
Any other future business items?
Are we having a presentation from the library, the teacher librarians?
Yes, that's.
Next, okay, because that's what I was going to suggest. The other thing is that I was wondering if we could have an update from Mormon Consulting. We didn't have anything at our equity meeting and I was kind of surprised that we didn't have anything on PBIS from her. I would like to have something.
Oh, from her.
From her, kind of like maybe even in person.
It could be in person on Zoom. I'm bringing a proposal to the twenty-third with data and what's been done.
That's, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Is she also, I mean, I think that could be special. You know, first water. What they've done, like their theories, all of that, like a very, you know, cursory introduction.
Her. When we were first talking to her over a year ago, at least that I've heard. So I was just wondering, I would just like to hear, that is exactly what I'd like, but also I'd like to hear from her.
Okay, I'll see what I can do to make that happen on the twenty-third. If I, if it can't happen on the twenty-third, I'll see, there's another date. Okay, I was just going to bring the proposal then. So it would be nice if it was about, she was available, but I don't know that she is. Okay, thank you.
Not really as future business, but I'm going to squeeze it in here as a celebration to share with people. This year was the first time CIF ran a statewide tournament for esports at the high school level. Hundreds of schools ran in the, played in the in the season. And then the hot top hundred twenty, hundred twenty-eight were selected for a single elimination tournament bracket. And both of our highs are comprehensive high schools, Peddleum High and Casa Grande made it into the tournament in this first year of this tournament. And Peddleum High made it to the round of sixty-four and Casa Grande made it to the round of thirty-two. This is the the state's first CIF. It's pretty awesome. It's great.
Great. Well, if there's no other future business, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at nine nineteen. Oh, she stopped. Do we?
Yeah, we need to report.
Oh, yeah.
Last.
Okay, we're going to report out on closed session items. Four point three pursuant to government code five four nine five seven, public employee discipline dismissal release of a classified employee. I believe trustee Jen moved and I seconded and it passed unanimously.
Yes.
And now I will adjourn the meeting at nine twenty PM.